Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Byram Hills Board Education Meeting for February 6, 2018. And the chair joins in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to your republic, for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice to see you all. Nice to see a full board meeting room. So we're going to have an interesting evening tonight. We are going to have some interesting discussions and some debates. And looking forward to talking to you all. We're going to have the opportunity to talk about some of our history, some of our foundation. And a little bit later on, we're also going to talk about some innovations that is happening right now in our curriculum. And we are also going to talk a little bit about the future, about maybe some trends that might impact our athletics. So it's going to be an interesting evening tonight. So welcome, everybody. And just since we do have people in the public, and I believe we do have people that have expressed interest in talking in our meeting, I just wanted to let everyone know our procedures for public participation at our board meetings. We don't usually get a lot of people who want to talk at our meetings, so we're happy that you're here. So how it works, we are not required to have the public speak at our board meetings, but this board feels that we want the public to be able to do that if they want to make some comments on whatever we're talking about. So what happens is I'll introduce an item that's on the agenda. The board has our discussion. The administration will talk with us, too. And at the appropriate time, I will turn it over to the public, and I will see if anybody wants to make a comment to us. And they'll get my attention when I do that. And then I'll ask you to rise and face the camera and state your name and your address and organization if you're here representing an organization. And at that time, then, if you could address your comments to me for the board, just address them to me. And we'll allow about three minutes per person, per topic. Okay? So with that, just for the record, I called the meeting to order at 6:50, and we went into executive session. And we discussed item 3.1, which was a personnel matter, teacher tenure; 3.2, negotiations matter, BHTA; 3.3, a personnel matter, individual employee; 3.4, personnel matter, retired employee. And we're going to go back to executive session after our public meeting to discuss item 3.5, which is a legal matter, transportation; 3.6, legal matter, individual employee; 3.7, contract matter, individual employee; 3.8, contract matter, BHAA; 3.9, contract matter, individual consultant. And because we didn't have enough to talk about in executive session, we added one more on. So we've changed to our agenda. We added on 3.10, personnel matter, individual employee. At this time, are there any comments from the public of any matters that we are not, we don't have on our agenda? Is there any other comments? Okay, hearing none. Can I have a motion to approve our revised agenda as mentioned?
Some move.
In a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay. And can I have a motion to approve our consent agenda for personnel, special services, and business?
Some move.
Second. Okay, all in favor? And just so you know, use of consent agenda permits the board to make a more effective use of our time. And we do it by adding a single motion to cover relatively routine matters, things such as simple budget transfers, coaching assignments, purchase authorizations, approving donations such as books and all that. But every once in a while, there's something that we approve on consent that we want to just bring out to the public's attention. And tonight, we have two of those. First one that we did was we accepted a donation from the Byram Hills PTSA for $3,951.91. And that money is going to be a grant from the PTSA, which is going to go toward WAMBAS. We have a courtyard, an outside courtyard, and it's going to be a learning space. So I know that our WAMBA students are going to be thrilled with that. And we wanted to thank the PTSA and everyone who contributed to that grant. And that is the second grant that we've gotten, I believe, in the last two months for the PTSA. The one that we had approved, I think it might have been our last meeting, was for HCC for the cafeteria. So just wanted to give a shout out to the PTSA and thank them for that. And we also accepted a donation from Armonk Baseball League. And that was for $2,500. And that is going to the earmark for the annual Disney trip for softball spring training. And Armonk Baseball has been a fantastic friend and a partner to our school district. So I wanted to thank everybody affiliated with that. And that brings us to our special report, the one I promised that we're going to talk about, what's happening great in the current time, our curriculum conversation on Global Scholars. And this initiative in curriculum directly addresses our mission to really embrace the leaders of the next generation. And we're going to get to hear from some of those leaders tonight. So we're excited about that. And we're joined by some of our directors, William Smith and Stahl, and some of the students who really embrace this new program. So we're looking forward to hearing from that. And John?
Yeah, I think about my predecessor, the former superintendent, who wanted to know what was on the other side of steam, you know, sort of like the other side of the moon. And your administrators really came to discover what that would look like and started to develop it and morph it and spent a lot of time trying to think about opportunities for students in our district that were unlike opportunities they've had before, where it's not your typical science research or your AP class, but it's something that really helps you to focus on something that interests you. When I talk to seniors now who are on their path to college, I try to remind them all the time, it's about finding something you really like doing and you want to explore passionately. That will bring you intense joy. And we don't want you to have to wait until you're a full-blown adult and out of college to have those experiences. So Tim will introduce, but I just wanted to say that we are indebted to my predecessor for that, to help us to keep a lens to what your future is going to be like and how these skills are going to make you enjoy your learning now and take something with you later.
Great, thank you. And I'm so excited to have this team here with us today. So first, we'll do introductions. And Ms. Glad mentioned our teachers of this course, but let me introduce them again. They also have been creating it, have been writing curriculum, have been designing the instructional approach, and they've been doing a lot of work to get this program off the ground. So we have our social studies chairperson, Jen Layden, world languages chairperson, Melissa Stahl, and English chairperson, Dwight Smith. And it's amazing to have these three co-teaching a course. And it's pretty phenomenal if you have the opportunity to go in and watch them in action. And it's really great, you'll hear about that tonight. And let me also have our students who are here, pioneers themselves in the first time taking this course. Could you introduce yourselves, wave to the camera, and then say your name? And Thomas Wood.
Bye, back corner.
It's behind you.
I'm Woodrake.
Uh, Woodrake, you're in.
I'm Hallie Remnant, and I'm a sophomore.
Hi, I'm Emma Farah, I'm a junior.
I'm Zach Hogan, I'm a junior.
I'm Brad Perlmutter, I'm a junior.
I'm Jessica Taber, I'm a sophomore.
Great, so thank you. And we'll jump into the conversation in a moment. Let me just get a little bit of background. And I want to remind the board of why we're doing Global Scholars and what it is as we talked about it last spring as we were starting to create what this program would be. So the question is why global competency? And there's two main reasons. First, one has to do with how technology has flattened the world. And as a result, two things have happened. First, the world is our library. We have information anywhere at any time through the internet. So students can find and access information that we couldn't do 10, 15, 20 years ago. The second thing is the world is our neighborhood. We can collaborate and know people across the globe. And we can talk to those people at any time. That has also really changed in the last decade. So that's one reason, is the influence that technology has had on the world. The second is because of technology, we're moving from the information age to the innovation age. We're now in a different time where we're not sure what jobs will exist when these students graduate from college. So we have to be preparing students for a world that we're not even sure what it looks like. So what are the skills and the knowledge you need to possess in order to be successful in that world? And that is another reason why we think global competency is the right way to go. Well, what is global competency is the next question we asked ourselves as we were starting to grade the program. And we've been defining it, at least this program, in our view of it, this way. It's looking at international awareness. We knew as a district that we have to be working to make our students aware of current events in the world, and that was a big part of it, wanting them to see world history and how history fits into today. So really, this global perspective, this international awareness is part of it. The other piece is knowing how to communicate with people who are very different than you. Now that technology has allowed us to communicate across the globe, that is part of our goal as well, is how to do that. The other is knowing that since you're communicating with people very different, what is the role of world languages and knowing how to speak different languages? So we've made that part of our mission. As well as what I said earlier, is teaching the skills and the knowledge of the workforce that you're going to need to be successful in the future. So that's how we're defining global competency. And then finally, we've created this three-year sequence. So this is our first venture into our global competency initiative, that we really mean is a K-12 initiative. So this course is a three-year sequence, and it's designed to provide students with the opportunity to study and investigate some topics that might not be isolated to just a single discipline. So we're hoping that these projects cross the content areas, which we think they do, for investigating global issues, analyzing things from different perspectives, and learning how to communicate those ideas. And additionally, there's the goals of having global awareness, thinking critically and problem-solving, and taking on leadership skills, all integrated into this program. And those are the goals of the program. So now we'll just give a quick overview of the content, what the class actually is, and then you'll hear from it firsthand from our students.
Yes, so Duane and Melissa and I, it will be two years ago this spring, went to the Harvard Think Tank on Global Education. And that really inspired us to think deeply and study about global education and global competency. And before we really created something, we wanted to think, well, what are the skills and competencies that we want to ensure that students will have as a result of this program? And we looked to the Asia Society Framework on Global Competency because really, they had, they were sort of in the forefront of this work. And they really define it in four different quadrants. The idea that kids, students need to be able to investigate the world through research. Students need to be able to recognize multiple perspectives on an issue. Students need to be effectively able to communicate those ideas in a variety of different ways. And then sort of the most exciting part, they need to be able to take action on what they learn and to make a difference. And so we started with that framework in mind. And that was really sort of the skeleton in which we built the curriculum. And then our next question was really, well, what are we going to, what's the content? What do we want kids to know? And we started with the UN Sustainability Goals. So the UN has these very ambitious goals that they want to achieve by 2030. And we thought, well, let's get going. We've got some students who are ready and capable to help us address these goals. So we looked at the sustainability goals and thought, how can we break those down and categorize them in meaningful ways so students, at least in year one of the program, get a really good overview about what are the big issues that the world is grappling with today? And how can I really get exposure to sort of the big thinking behind all of those ideas? And then, once we had sort of the skills and the content, then came the curriculum. And we really, for year one, focused in on sort of four big ideas from really, what is global competency? To make sure the kids understood what skills we would be holding them accountable. And then three big content-related units about the environment, economic development, and global conflicts. And all of those sort of are a big umbrella that address the framework of global competency, but also the UN Sustainability Goals.
Great. So we're going to jump in with the students. And obviously, anytime you have a question, jump in as well. And my first question to the students is, a year ago, you had to start thinking about your course schedule for this year. And we were still conceptualizing this course. So it didn't exist. So I'm curious, when you read about it, why did you end up taking this course? What appealed to you?
So currently, we have many conflicts and atrocities occurring today. And a big thing is that I wanted to learn about the current events. And tomorrow, the world will be changed, and the death of others will be changed as well. And we're the leader in the future of tomorrow. So I mean, I want to be able to learn about what's going on in the world and take action. And that's why I saw this course as a chance to do that.
So you had an interest in current events for a while. And so for yourself, just taking action is something that's been important to you?
Yeah, it isn't very important to me. I want, I want to know that I made a difference on the community level or on a national or international level. And this class gives me the resources to do that with great teachers and a great curriculum.
I mean, so for me, there were two interests of mine that really this class sparked. And the first one was an entrepreneurship aspect, because that's something I'm really interested in as I go forward in my education. And the second one is a civic leadership aspect. And the really cool part about this class is it's able to combine both, which I would probably name something along the lines of like social entrepreneurship, where you basically get the opportunity to create projects, but also use a civic background in order to achieve them.
Why does entrepreneurial ship appeal to you?
I mean, personally, that's because I love creating projects, advocating for myself, and I enjoy seeing change made by something that I've created. And I think that this class is a really good way to back that.
The reason that I really chose it is because I feel that, especially in the community that we live in now, we're kind of in a little bit of a bubble, and we're sheltered here. And I really wanted mostly exposure to the things. And one of my favorite aspects of the class at the moment is that we get to learn many lessons and that you team up with a partner. And you have to present something to the class that's a current event or something of that sort that has to do with the topic that we're covering currently. And basically, it's just a really great way to get exposure to it and communicate about it and give feedback and learn how to become a stronger speaker and all of that stuff. So I think it really incorporates that.
I know that during ninth grade, when we were doing the ninth grade global issue speech, that was kind of the introduction to the course. So like without knowing, I was kind of already involved in the course in some way. So when I was like trying to find a topic for the speech, I was looking through all these topics, and all of them kind of interest me in different ways. So when I saw the Global Scholars Program, I'm like, well, obviously, this must include all of these aspects. So this could be the perfect course for me, so.
And what has been most interesting to you so far in the course? What's something that's really appealed to you that you'd like to?
To me, I'm a huge lover of philosophy. And the idea that everything that you witness in life can be seen through a million different lenses. And each one of those lenses isn't necessarily correct or incorrect. The idea that everything is relative to the person who is behind it. And the idea that we're in a poverty unit right now. And to say that someone coming from a community like we do understands the life that people in India experience every day with not having their basic needs of food, shelter, and water and fuel. And trying to say that it's, it's, I mean, it's the question, is it our duty to help these people? Is it our duty by living the way that we do to reach out and to create a baseline for these people who are less fortunate than us so that as a humankind, we do improve? Or is it, does that responsibility fall on that person themselves? So I think that was one of the most interesting things that we've discussed so far this year because it really forces the learner to look outside and open their eyes to different perspectives. And I don't know.
Just a quick question. So you've already had to pick your classes year electives, I believe, for next year, is that correct? How many of you decided to take the second year of this program?
I can't.
You can't? To the rest of you that can, if it's in your schedule, you plan to do that?
So I think what's really cool is that even if you necessarily can't, the skills that you actually learn in this class are something that you can apply to something outside the classroom setting.
This class is so interdisciplinary that it doesn't even feel like it's a classroom setting most of the time. It's like it's a class that helps you prepare for what you want to do outside of the classroom. And I think that's a really important thing to note because all these skills that we learn are not academic. You know, they're all about communication and being able to drive your own opinions and form your own arguments that are individual to who you are. And finding your passions and really using that as your fuel to make a difference in the world. And that's something that you don't necessarily get in a classroom, so.
So I had a question, although Emma touched on it, which is the interdisciplinary nature of this because it really is unique, not only to us, but really unique to the high school experience, just the way that the high school curriculum was designed, the way APs are designed. They tend to be very focused on one discipline. And if you look at college campuses, many colleges are struggling to figure out how to mix disciplines. Some do it really well, some don't. But everybody's trying to get at it because the world is a more complex place than just looking at math in a silo and English in a silo. So I guess from a teacher's perspective and then also from the student's perspective, what's it like in this interdisciplinary environment? What are some of the lessons learned over the first iteration of doing this over the many months so far that you've had in the classroom? And what are the unique things that are takeaways, either for students or for teachers, about this type of setup versus the traditional classroom?
Well, I think for me, one of the first things that I had to give up was the concept that I might have been the expert on every single thing. I was used to having literature in front of me, poems. And all of a sudden, I'm thrust into a classroom where we're talking about climate change and the science and some of the things that might be contributing to some of the effects of what we've done to the planet over the last 200 years. And you know, it's interesting to me because as someone who was used to being looked at as that expert, I had to rethink my entire role in a classroom. It made it much more of a community of learners. It made it much more where the students were participating in actually teaching all of us and that we were working together on a project where the goal was to have a communal understanding and to make it better by virtue of the fact that we all had different positions that we were coming from. That's a huge shift. Most teachers were probably brought up in the former type of classroom that I had discussed. But it's not that way anymore. And I think we're the better for it.
I think for me, the collaborative piece, you know, we're three instructional leaders for our department. So we're used to doing things our way and having other people do that. So coming together and being able to say, I'm okay with that idea, we can make this work. Reflecting on how lessons go, I mean, many times between third and fourth period, we're like, woo, that didn't work so well. Let's change it for the fourth period, going through. And just that constant reflective piece, you know, even now that we've been through, you know, we're in our third unit now. It's like, okay, how are we going to change things for next year based on what the feedback, thankfully, these students are very honest with their feedback. And we need to listen to that. And I think that's what we're going to continue to do is, you know, pump them for, what can you tell us about improving this course?
For the students and the teachers, how has it been working with sophomores, juniors, and seniors collabora? Because usually, until junior year, you really don't mix that much. It's a little more maybe in an art class. How's it been in an academic class to work with a range of students? How's it been for the students also, working with some, as a sophomore, working with a senior? It's very different than most of your other classes.
So we have an advocacy goal. That goal is to do something with, it was for the environment. So my goal was to use recycled water bottles from local businesses. Actually, it'd be the business owners who discussed with them collecting it. And then I would exchange it for money. And then money would go to a charity called Foreign Aid, called Direct Relief, which is gives a foreign aid of medicine. My biggest concern was that during times of national disasters, people were cut off from receiving medicine and attention from doctors because transportation was blocked off. So me and a sophomore worked together. And we came up with this plan, and it worked out very well. So working with people from other ages are very good because I get different ideas and perspectives on it. And on top of that, it's a good learning environment in general.
I mean, to go off of that, really, to answer that specific part of the question, I would say that, you know, in the real world, you're not, you don't get to choose all the time who you work with. And you may work with a wide variety of people, some who are smarter than you, some who you can't stand. But you know, it's, part of this class, I think, is learning to work with all different types of people. And that's the very real-world, like, application that this class provides because you don't always get to choose who you work with or the level of, you know, academics of the people you work with or the age or the maturity. And I think it's adapting to it and being able to understand that you can work with people of all ages and that everyone has something to bring to the table is a really good part of this class.
That's very well said.
Do any of you plan to work in Byram Hills when you? We'll still be here.
Emma, particularly, what are your comments regarding your philosophy?
Thank you.
You could have been a trailblazer for this program, but too great you can't take it next year.
Keep her involved somewhere.
Yeah.
It's a great problem not to be able to do all the wonderful things you want to do.
I know.
As you go through this program, has it caused you to reflect on your own values and maybe change or rethink? Maybe not change, but rethink your values and examine the underpinnings for where they came from?
I think one of the most special moments that I've had in this course was when Sebastian Villas came and spoke to us about his experience in Brussels. When there was an atomic bomb that went off, and he was severely injured, he almost lost both of his legs. And just hearing his story firsthand and thinking to myself, I heard about this event, you know, maybe like four years ago, but it felt so distant. You know, everything about it felt like it just, it had nothing to do with me. It couldn't touch me, it had absolutely no relation to my life. And having him come and talk about his family and his kids and how much it meant to him to be able to find that inner strength inside of himself, to keep pushing on and try to inspire other people to find that kind of resilience, really had an impact on me. Because it opened my eyes to the idea that, you know, we are living in a global world. We're not living in a sexualized society where people, you know, it doesn't impact you what happens in Puerto Rico when you're sitting, you know, in this chair right here. So I think that's a huge thing that this course has taught me, that it does have something to do with me, especially with climate change. Because that's going to be my problem and maybe my kid's problem in 50 years from now. And it's something that we're trying to tackle now, which I think is really quite spectacular, so.
Anybody else have?
So for me, while this may not necessarily be a value of mine, typically in an academic setting, my entire academic career, it's always been about trying to achieve that A. And to me, there's been no other even thought in my mind that, you know, if I fail that test, oh, God, here we go. But I would say that in this class, failure is inevitable. And it's taught, and it's basically taught that that's okay. I did a project where I organized a shoe drive. And let me tell you, it failed miserably. I was expecting, I was expecting maybe like 40-plus shoes, and I got a total of seven. And you know, I think what it really taught me, though, is that I'm going to fail. Not all of my ideas are going to work necessarily the first time. But I can learn from my past mistakes. And we also, by the way, do this in the actual grading scale of the class, where we're not necessarily graded A, B, C, but rather 1, 2, 3, 4. necessarily graded A, B, C, but rather 1, 2, 3, 4. And we're allowed to shift where we may be a 1 in one category and a 4 in another, and we're allowed to shift throughout the semester and the year to enhance our abilities in each of these separate categories, which is an extremely effective way of grading, standard-based grading. And it teaches you that you can fail and that failure is actually the path to success.
That's a pretty valuable lesson to learn, isn't it?
I would say so.
Is that a challenging transition to a different type of grading system from points where you can keep track of your A status along the way to suddenly like, "Hmm, I'm not quite sure where this is going to fall?"
I think it's really based on like a growth, more like a baseline of growth because I'm, I mean, obviously, all of us are still like, as Brett was saying, that we're all worried about like getting that A and keeping our averages and checking the portal every day. But in this class, we really don't mind as much because we know that, like, at the end of every quarter, we have a meeting with our designated teacher because we all have like a homeroom kind of thing. And basically, just as long as you're growing and you're succeeding in, like, in regards to your discussion in class and all of that stuff, you're doing fine. And we're not really worried about the grades. We're more worried about the in-class and the growth.
And going off of that, I think that the discussions we have with our teachers and like our other peers is really helpful in the sense that we get different advice from different viewpoints, and everyone has a different opinion on something. So when you have like several different opinions on one thing, then you can take those opinions and work it into your ultimate goal.
Well, you just kind of skipped college now. You certainly been able to put it all together. This is a remarkable summary by some very special students.
I feel like speaking skills are amazing. So the class is really worth it. That's one of the goals of the class.
We did not do this before this. When we were discussing this program, you never know how it's going to work. I mean, you think you do, and you wonder which type of student would be attracted to it. You're wondering how the three faculty leaders will be able to organize it, classify it, plan it, instruct in it. But it seems like to me, we have 1, 2, 3, 6, eight instructors and eight students sitting in front of us. And that's pretty special in any program in a high school. And this is, it really is heartwarming to hear what's going on there and the lessons you're learning. Boy, this is, my wife is listening to it right now. Really, it's, you should be congratulated. There's a lot more work to do, but this is very special stuff, so congratulations to all of you.
And you all played a great role to get your first ones through. And it already seems like your feedback does count, and I'm sure that the program naturally will continue to evolve and shift and change as you learn what works and what doesn't. So you're an important part of that process, and we thank you for that.
Can I ask, how many students are currently enrolled in the program?
Almost 80.
And next year, same amount?
Next year, we have, I think, 50.
We have about 100.
Yeah, 52 year, 55 year.
Between the year one and year two, it'd be about 100. Is it? I'm sorry, the kids that are signing up for the very first year, and it's how many?
50 new kids plus 50 kids staying on. So we have 100 altogether next year.
Remember, we designed the course so that you can enter it anytime. You don't have to take all three years like in our science.
You can enter it anytime. You have to do the first leg of the course.
Yes, right. So it could be a senior, you're still doing the year one work, but you can enter as a senior.
Do we have any seniors that took it? Because I know it's kind of hard to.
Four, five seniors.
Really?
Four, five seniors that are taking it.
I have a question for you based on Brett, what you were talking about, about the rubric. And sometimes you're a 1 in areas and sometimes you're a 4. Can any of you articulate an area that you know you want to continue to grow in? That's something that you've been working on or an area you want to move with?
I feel like, for me, one of the biggest areas that I wanted to work on was being able to assert myself in situations with adults. And like what everyone was referring to about how this class is really, our teachers are more like our collaborators. You know, it's a very student-run course in the way where we set our own goals and our measure of success, that grade that we get, is based on us reading our own personal goal. So with that said, it's really important that you're able to ask for what you want. You know, be able to be resourceful and reach out to people above you and to other officials and ask them for their opinions, ask them for their advice, see if they can give you any sort of, I don't know, resources that you may not have had by yourself. And having these three chairs of the department makes a huge difference because they all have their different contacts and they all have their different skills that they bring to the table. And it really gives you the leeway to reach into all these different areas and make your action plan the most successful one it can be.
Is she on a tenure track here? What, you're 35 years old?
That's a little bit different than probably how you feel after you take a test in senior sport, right?
Really, it's impressive.
Different than science research.
Can I put Howie and Jess, one of you on the spot just to talk about, I was thinking about when Emma was talking about being assertive and speaking with adults. Did you guys not have an opportunity over the last few months to talk to some adults in our school and make a change?
Oh, I'll hear about that.
So basically, for our, for our action plan goal, me and Jess teamed up, and we decided that we wanted to do something about habitat loss and deforestation. And we thought that we really wanted to see a direct change in something close to home. So we decided that we were going to try to make an initiative to speak to some adults at school, and we didn't really know what was going to happen. And basically, our goal was to change some, at first, it was some of them, but we wanted to change all of the paper towels in the bathrooms to hand dryers. And basically, one of the greatest things I learned throughout that experience was researching because we sat for days on our computers just searching all different types of hand dryers and pros and cons and because there's sanitary issues with some of them and some of them are not as fast and are powerful. And basically, we narrowed it down and we found some amazing stuff. And we had a meeting with Mr. Walsh, which was, it was a little scary, like going into his room. No, no, that was scary. It was scary going in, but then it was okay.
You're terrified.
And basically, I mean, it went really well. And we had, we talked about how, basically, we use so, so much paper towels, we don't even think about it. Like, every time you go to wash your hands, you take one, and then you just keep taking more and more because, you know, you just, we're just wasting them. And so basically, we made a plan that we were going to start in some of like the most populated bathrooms in the school and maybe replace one or two at a time and see how things go. So I really, we really enjoyed doing that. And, I mean, it's still in the processes, so we'll see how it goes. And I just think it's very cool how we can see something on such a local level making a difference here and maybe expand it.
She covered it.
You know, I just, I have a question. I can't help but compare this sort of process, this type of class, to science research. I know it's different, but the whole three-year progression. And I was just wondering, for our directors, did you speak with the science research department to kind of mirror it or does it not, is it not really applicable, the same sort of setup?
Well, I'm fortunate. One of the English teachers actually works in the science research program. Megan Salamon is sort of our bridge to that program, so I have inside information that's coming from her. I think we wanted to make this program different. What we liked about science research, we really did keep, the individual, you know, being in charge of his or her learning, the curiosity that drives doing something that is authentic. We hear about the Authentic Science Research Program all the time, and I think that first word of the program was really what we were striving for in our program. We wanted the students to feel like they could have an impact on a local level, a national or an international level. And we wanted the students to feel like the work that they were doing was the kind of work that they would walk away from a high school and be able to use in any profession that they go into. And that's the interpersonal skills, that's the collaborative skills. You know, when Brett was talking about his shoe drive and the idea of failure, you know, to me, I thought that was a wonderful success, obviously, because what is he learning from that? He's learning so many different things about what it takes to actually make a difference in this world. And it's not easy. Otherwise, it would be something we'd all be trying to do, and we're not. So it takes some special students to be the pioneers here. It takes some special students to go through and really dedicate themselves to some of the projects that they're doing. And then to walk away from ones that don't necessarily work and still be emboldened and want to do this again and want to try again. So this is where I guess science research kind of fed into us, but we're in a different path.
The presentation skills that you're all saying that you're getting, when did you have the opportunity to practice that? Do you get up and present in front of your classmates as well?
Yeah, so we have different teachers for different resources, English, social studies, and language. And there was one day in particular, I remember, where we were broken up into different groups and we were, it was all in Spanish. It was a massive Spanish project to be a deal of 15 minutes. And that day, I was chosen to speak in front of my entire class in Spanish about something I just learned about. So even in other languages, which is very important for the world today because it's very interconnected and globally competent, it was important that I actually spoke in front of an entire class of people, learn something new that I just found out about in a different language. So English and Spanish, there are presentation skills involved.
We really work a lot with the kids on feedback, too. So when they had their ideas for their action project, they had to present it. We kind of modeled it off of Shark Tank a little bit, so they had to do an elevator pitch of their action project plan. And then it was really, the kids have been trained really well to give that feedback, that critical feedback, but also feedback that's going to push and promote the work and move that forward. And this past week, some of the students went to the middle school and helped those students who were working on their capstone project and gave them feedback because they had really honed those skills really well.
So doing that's very different than a traditional setting where you get a test, you look at your grade, you stuff it in your backpack, you don't want to show anybody.
Or you show it off.
Or you show it off. So how was that sort of being, you know, you're putting your idea out there and then getting feedback upon it in front of your peers? Was that challenging for you?
One of the best things I think I've ever heard was when Mr. Smith said to me that this classroom isn't about a teacher reciting information to the students and the students regurgitating that information back to the teacher. This class is about the teacher giving the students the platform to create their own questions and create their own meaning and design their own way of learning. So it's not about, it's really not about obtaining information, it's about learning something about yourself and learning something about the world. So, I mean, with the foreign languages, I'm a huge, I mean, I've always said that the more languages you know, the less boundaries you have. So to take.
I just saw.
A tear. I just saw a tear. I just watched my wife for a whole night. I have a job done, I can go home.
It's like, when you, when you think about it, I take Spanish and French. I want to take three more by the time I graduate college.
Well, now we know why she can't do it next year.
When I learned Spanish on top of French, it was all of a sudden like I could walk into this whole other world in Spain. And it felt like I was suddenly not so far away from the people sitting right next to me. It felt like I could have a conversation with them, and they, they were no longer people from this alternate universe that I had no idea what was going on in it, you know? And that is something that is key to this program that I don't think gets honored as much as it should be. Because, you know, in order to follow through with all of these goals that we have, you need to be able to work with people on an interpersonal level. And the best way to do that is to speak their language. So I think that's something that I really love about this program.
Yeah, so for me, it's actually interesting, opposite of Emma, I actually dropped my languages here. And, you know, the reason I dropped it was not necessarily. I got, I got bonus pick the first day I walked in. But no, the reason I dropped the language was not necessarily because I didn't love Spanish, because I really enjoyed it. But my problem with Spanish was that I didn't like it in the classroom setting. I was frustrated when I had to just learn grammar concepts and memorize vocab words to spit it back out on the test. Interestingly enough, when Ms. Stahl told us that we were going to be doing Spanish, my first reaction was, "Oh, God, here we go again." But when we actually started learning the UN sustainability goals in Spanish and talking about like how we could actually apply our Spanish to, you know, just real-world issues, this is, I was like, "Okay, this is something I actually want to do." Like, this is why I would go to a foreign country and go immerse myself in a program for three months to learn Spanish. Because to me, that's where it benefits us the most rather than a classroom setting.
And I also think that, well, we did an activity where we heard something, heard something in Spanish, and we had to respond to it, which is really important. Yeah, it's really important to do that more often because that's what you're really doing in real life. You're having a real conversation, you're not writing stuff down and then looking at it and then speaking it out loud. You're more just hearing what a person says in another language and then having a conversation based off of that, which I thought was really important and really like, like special to me rather than the other setting like Brett was saying.
I'd also like to add that it's very upsetting that our community is somewhat jaded to current-day conflicts and atrocities that are occurring today. And on the news, for example, we'll see something and we'll go out to eating our dinners and we'll kind of forget about it. And that's horrible. And what this class does is bring current issues, very serious and pressing issues, to the forefront of our learning so that we can use those topics, build off them, and ensure that these things don't happen again in the future, that we can actually prevent these things. And we can learn about why people do what they do and how we can actually help it. So this class is very important and it's very integrating our entire culture with another culture and making sure that current-day topics aren't forgotten about.
And that was a goal of this board for many years, was trying to integrate current events more authentically into our curriculum, and it's really happening now here.
I can listen to the students all night, unfortunately.
They're wondering if it's going to snow tomorrow. So since you're with the superintendent, I'll tell you and only you. We won't know until the morning. I hope, yeah.
We have to vote, we voted on whether or not.
Can we go? I don't have any. I appreciate that you brought this to us and that all of you took this time out to come here. And I hope that maybe you'll come back next year and tell us what's happening in year two. And you're more than welcome, all of you, to stay. We have an interesting meeting. So we would be, I think all of us would be very happy if you wanted to go back and continue to fix the world.
Can I say one thing? Honestly, it's, we always tell people, "Yeah, we'd love to have you back," and most of the time, we may or may not mean it. But we really mean it. A year from now, I would love to hear from you all again, even you, Emma. I really would. I think this is.
And in Spanish.
And in Spanish, whatever language you happen to be learning, maybe Latin. Okay, well, but this is, this has been so fascinating, I think, for the board, that if we could follow up in a year and really see where this program has gone and where you've taken it, I think it would be a wonderful, wonderful learning experience for us and really assist us in what we're doing. So think about it.
I'm just struck with how empowered you all feel and how you've learned such a great skill set to advocate for yourselves, to advocate for people less fortunate than yourselves. And that, the recurring theme here, I think, is that you've all like come away with this with empathy for the world around you, and I'm like really, really touched by that.
I'm definitely blown away by how articulate you are, passionate, and that you know yourselves, which is a great accomplishment at this age. And I'm also really indebted to your teachers who didn't have to do this. They wanted to do this in the sake of you. This is the reward.
Congratulations.
We'll take, we'll take a two-minute recess. Just if you want to stay, you can, otherwise. Don't feel that superintendent says you're going. Thank you all. Now, we're going to bring it down to policy. That was wonderful conversation. That brings us to our time, which is unfinished business. And we have three policies we're going to review. I'm going to separate them, though. The first one is kind of a motion to approve as a second read policy, 6240, which was investments. And a second?
Second.
Okay. And we had no changes from the last time. What else is?
Sure. So we gave this policy a lot of thought, and I want to thank Scott and Mike who did some homework and research on it and advised us as well. So if I can just summarize it, Mike, feel free to jump in if you speak more. As is, the policy is okay. So we had to make some changes to a collaborative investment. That was the recommendation in here. So the policy doesn't seem to have any issues, and we really went through and to make sure that the collaborative piece in here is okay. What Mike did sort of uncover was maybe something turned around a particular investment that the district has, and maybe the board would want to look at that specific investment and maybe we did that, do some of that work in committee. Was one recommendation from the policy committee, but we'll leave it up to the board to decide. But Mike felt that the policy was okay, but it did get us to that piece.
And we need, and it was one or two pieces in this that we just wanted to spend a little bit more time on, so.
Were you saying that, are you talking about in the policy boarding or?
No, in the particular investment.
Okay.
Yeah, but, okay, that's right.
Right. No Enron options, right?
But this is worth spending time on and taking a closer look at some of the investments and tightening up what we want to do in terms of.
And the controls, et cetera, yeah.
Appreciate you guys taking that time to look at that.
Whether you want the policy committee to do it or through a budget committee.
We just want to make sure that in the second read, why we even push it, we just want to make sure that that doesn't impact the actual policy as it's written. So I think that's why it's second read.
I would love to, I mean, I don't know how the board feels, but if Scott and Mike would like to undertake this, you know, as sort of an informal subcommittee and get back to us, you really have the skills. Well, I'd love to hear what your comments.
So maybe the right process is if we do that, then we go back to the policy committee just to ensure that what's in the policy right now doesn't necessitate any change based on.
I think that would be great.
And then we come back and.
I think that would be great.
That makes sense.
Yeah, and let's just keep that in mind, too, when we talk about committees, because I know we're talking about changing committees because maybe we want to, just keep that in the back of our minds because maybe there's a subsection of that. We'll have that conversation in March. We're scheduled to talk about committee assignments.
Perfect. All right, thank you guys for looking at that.
But thank you, both of you, for doing that.
Okay, so motion's on the table, all in favor? All right, and then can I have a motion to adopt as a first read policy, 4532, school volunteers, interns, and. volunteers, interns, and student teachers?
So move.
In a second?
Second.
All right, so this policy is new, we did not have this policy before, but we do have various groups of individuals who come and volunteer in the school, in our schools. So we thought it was important to have a policy on this so we make sure we're following procedures. Good news is that we have procedures in place for all of the volunteers. So this just puts it into writing and makes it consistent across all of our school buildings. So this covers school volunteers, it covers interns, we sometimes have interns in our schools and student, you know, schools, and student teachers. And we also address parent volunteers, because we have parents in the building a lot doing volunteer work, so we address that issue in this policy as well.
I thought this was well, I thought this was well done. I was concerned, not concerned, I was curious how you're going to handle certain things in this. And I think it's well done, Tim and the committee, because I think this is something we really need to have formalized and covered. Because we do have a lot of, this is not something we want to do retrospectively, retroactively, you want to have it upfront, so.
We wanted to protect the district, and so it's important that we have those in place. And I will emphasize again, our schools did have procedures, we just made sure that the procedures are consistent and that we know who's in our building at all times.
Was this a NISBA policy or recommendation?
There was a NISBA policy in it, recommended policy that I've looked at, we didn't have a policy on this.
Okay.
So we thought it was important to have. So the committee's comfortable with this policy.
Okay, any other comments on this?
Yeah, is this going to go for a quick glance by council?
We can do that, yeah.
Just, I'm, I'm trying to think what it is, but it could be just the, the portion involving the, the security aspects of this, just let them give a quick vet, it's not, it's not a heavy lift, but just let them do it.
All right, and all in favor? So we'll see this again as a second read later on, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, and then can I have, sorry.
Fifty-four oh five.
I know, I went off of the rate. Can I have a motion to approve as a first read, fifty-four oh five, student wellness? In a second?
Second.
Okay.
And this is what happens when federal guidelines change.
This was a complete overhaul, if you look at the red light. It's pretty much brought out in red, written, because the federal policy on nutrition standards changed. And that was one aspect of it, and then New York went and changed some other aspects to their regulations. So this is a complete overhaul to meet the nutrition standards of the federal government.
And as a, as a practical stance, we would adhere to all the guidelines anyway, but it's really the write-up versus changing our lunch program or anything like that.
Right, so there's no major changes to the lunch program, the lunch program already was in compliance, and I think that's sort of the good work of Airmark, that stays on top of that stuff. So a lot of the nutrition guidelines has to do, have to do with making sure you're promoting foods that are of high nutritional value. There's criteria around calorie takes, intake and sugars content and things like that.
The strong meat.
So we certainly have made some changes over the years, so our meal program is in good, in good shape with this.
Right.
What the policy does do, there, there was areas around class parties, class parties actually do not fall within this restriction, so we don't have to worry about class parties.
Right.
Although we did agree through my doing some homework on this, that particularly in the elementary grades that have class parties a lot, we want to at least revisit guidelines. And it's, actually, I found out it's really controversial, because you have people on all ends of the spectrum, whether, no, I want my cupcakes, or how dare you bring sugar into the building.
Or my child can't have peanuts.
I was looking to see, there was no cross-reference, I thought that we had a policy on that.
We do have a policy.
Is it a policy, but I couldn't find it to cross-reference, should it be cross? Maybe we should. Food allergies?
We have a food policy.
About antihalaxis.
Yeah, in the cafeterias and things, we do.
Okay, because it seems like it should be cross-referenced here. And I just had a question, I think they call it competitive food, am I remembering that right, the other stuff, it's not part of the day-to-day...
Yes.
Okay, so it's the guidelines, that statewide guidelines, I would guess, caffeine's in there too, does there a bar of bean?
No, because caffeine is, is okay allowable at high school level. So we don't have to shut down.
Just no bar of bean at Compton Hill.
We won't be giving espresso to fifth graders.
None of those schools can get it, Kim, part of your cafeteria thing, you can't have a bar of bean.
One question for you, just on, on the challenge success survey, given that it's sort of wellness-related, does that have potentially any impact, not on the, necessarily the food portion, but on the wellness policy, or is it unlikely to, just with the timing of that, that's the only thing that struck me when I read this.
I don't know if it's going to have an impact on policy as much as practice.
Got it.
And a study of practice.
Oh, that makes sense.
Right, but I don't think of, on policy, it's really curriculum and programs.
Got it.
And what it could do, what's in the policy, what they spelled out more in the guidelines was the implementation of the policy and how we report out on the policy. So Rob Castagna, as our Director of Health Education and Physical Education, will be the facilitator of the Health and Wellness Committee, which will meet at least two times a year, three times a year, I believe. And will report to the board every three years on what the activities have been to re, to enforce the policy and any recommendations to change the policy. So that, that's all written in the language of this policy, which will become part of the committee's work. And Rob and I had already talked about how we could come up with a routine so that the poli, so that his committee is doing that type of work and will present to the board every three years on an update to this policy.
It sounds good.
So it was a big policy, it was a lot of people to get involved in and work through on this.
You know, I don't want to open a can of worms here, so I probably shouldn't even bring this up, I'm going to bring it up anyway.
Open it up.
Under, under B, it's meal scheduling, it's probably written straight on purpose, but it says, "District shall schedule lunchtime between the hours of ten and two and provide adequate time for students to eat lunch, adequate time."
Eight minutes.
It's vague on purpose?
It's vague on purpose, and that's the guideline, it's just...
Adequate time.
That's the federal guideline, it's just ten to, to, we can make that tighter if we wanted, but we thought sometimes we have delays.
But adequate time is how long they're, they're in the cafeteria.
Yeah, how long, there's no standard, it just says adequate time, so that's defined by the local.
Yes, adequate time.
All right, Chris?
Never adequate time. Chris would make lunch five minutes.
Twenty-six minutes.
At the high school.
I would make it an hour and a half, but...
We need another panini machine.
All right, that's great, any other comments on that? Okay. All right, we have a, thank you for all the work on all these, we have a motion on the table, all in favor? Okay, so we'll get to see that again, thank you very much. And one other unfinished business item, and that's ten point two, can I have a motion to approve as our second read, the 2018-2018 district calendar?
So move.
Okay, second?
Second.
No changes from last time?
There have been no changes since last time and weather permitting, school in session tomorrow, I will be blasting the calendar out to the...
Fantastic.
Provided the board approves it.
And just make a note though, to the end, the last date was not able to be changed, the twenty-sixth, okay, it's a long school.
School ends very late next year, last day of school for students is the twenty-sixth, that's traditionally our rating day, so students aren't in session.
The twenty-sixth, that's basically...
Very late.
Seven, eight days after graduation.
Yeah.
Well, not necessarily.
Graduation's the eighteenth, isn't it?
The, graduation's the eighteenth when last day of school is the twentieth, but now the last day of school is the twenty-sixth, so it is not, it is not necessarily happening on the eighteen.
And the last day of the region, the problem is the region schedule.
The region schedule.
That's the, to the public, we're kind of driven to this schedule because of the region.
Well, my question was, have we, do we know anything more from Albany than we knew before about, about the region schedule in the spring?
Is that a rhetorical question?
Yeah, so we'll find out, we'll find out in April.
All right, so thank you for getting that to us so quick this year, this is, this is nice and early.
Well, the region state's coming out early.
Doesn't that impact our contract with SUNY Purchase?
No.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Chris Walsh took care of that.
All in favor?
Thank you, Chris.
Lori Good, all in favor? Okay, thank you, everybody. And now, the moment we've all been waiting for, that was recent. That brings us to new business, and we are about to talk about eleven point one, which is athletic placement process. And just to, I want to set up that, that discussion a little bit, this is what I had talked about, which was some, the conversation was going to affect potentially future programs, specifically about athletics. So I just want to remind the board and just for the public's edification, just give them a little background to this topic. Back in June 2017, our athletic director came to the board, Rob Castagna, and first introduced this topic to us as part of your annual report on athletics to us, it came up, and we had some little healthy discussion back and forth. And, and at that meeting, former superintendent Bill Donnie had said to us that sports and community had changed a lot since the time we had put in that policy, which was policy fifty-two eighty, where we talk about athletic placement process, which is what we're going to be talking about today. And so he wanted us to keep an open mind because of that. And that policy that was in place did make sense at that time when it was put in place, it did, it served its time, for sure, because it helped us focus on student athletes with the emphasis on students, and it was right for that time. And I want us to keep in mind, while we discuss this section, I want us to keep in mind some sections of this policy, I just want to read one sentence in particular, keep it in the back of our mind, it is attached.
I see the process. I know, I see the process.
Fifty-two eighty is the policy?
Where is it?
Fifty-two eighty, all right. It's a long policy, but I just want us to keep in mind this one for discussion, because I think this sort of frames what we're going to be talking about. The Byram Hills School District will adhere to the philosophy of education-based athletics with the goal to enrich the educational experience of student athletes, here's the part I want you to listen to, encourage participation and promote sportsmanlike conduct. So the encourage participation, I have a feeling is going to be a crux of what we're going to be talking about today. So since that June meeting, a great deal of research and study and review has taken place on this topic. And tonight, we're going to hear resulting recommendation that's going to be presented to the board. And so now I am going to turn it over to Jen, who's going to listen.
So in addition to Rob presenting to the board last year, some discussions began at the Athletic Advisory Committee meetings and many discussions with parents and students about our current policy and the needs for our own students. Policies from other districts in our conference and our section were also being explored to see what is happening in other schools. Chris Walsh is here tonight, Rob Castagna, and Kim Lappel, we have our two principals, one from the middle and one from the high school, and Rob is our Director of Athletics, to talk to us about what has been transpiring since last June when Rob came to the board. We thought that it was very important to take a deep dive exercise and to find data that will help us have an unbiased opinion about what should happen, what is the data telling us. Rob, Kim, Chris, and I identified a few compelling reasons to undertake this review and the implications on students and program. First of all, we had an overwhelming number of other districts that had policies that differed from ours. That's okay, we can live with that, but we have to explore why it's okay to have a different policy. The second one is that students, parents, and coach voices were heard, and they were all indicating to us that our policy no longer represented the current needs of our athletes and teams. The third compelling reason for us to undertake a review was that youth athletics, we believe, has changed over the past fifteen years. Some students are increasingly more prepared for a competitive landscape in athletics. And fourth, we are sometimes unable to field teams. And this is a heartache, I know it was this year, for the girls' junior varsity basketball team. And I know that these are incidents and not descriptive of the entire athletic process, but had we had a different policy in place, we would have been able to field a junior varsity team for basketball this year. So all of those compelling reasons made us take a closer look. Rob had read to us the policy, and what the policy currently does is it really prohibits a seventh or eighth grader from trying out for a junior varsity sport. First, we had to come together philosophically to say, if we, what is the difference between junior varsity play and varsity play? And we know that varsity teams, you have to put your best player out there all the time. And we do know in JV teams that these are still developmental teams. So if a student who's a freshman, who is making a junior varsity team and is eligible for a junior varsity team, should that freshman, who is eligible to be on a JV team, lose a space to a seventh grader just because the seventh grader's better? And we philosophically had that conversation about sports at the JV level being developmental. So since September, Rob, Chris, Kim, and I have been looking at data, we've been doing it without bias, we want to identify whether a recommendation should be made to the board to consider a review of the policy. And tonight, first they will share the findings, and mostly Rob and Chris will share the findings, and Kim and I are here in a capacity to answer questions, but we have very much been a part of all of this decision-making and data gathering. And I'm excited about their recommendation, I feel it's appropriate.
All right, Rob says we have to use this, so I'm going to use this.
Rob.
All right, so thank you very much for having us here, we're delighted to be here to speak about this. When we say APP, we're talking about the athletic placement process. Again, like Rob had said, policy number fifty-two eighty. So to just go about it again, this change was brought about by all the different stakeholders who voiced their opinions and concerns about the process and offered reasons why it needed to be reviewed. Rob undertook a lot of that heavy lifting early on, and Kim and I and Jen were happy to join and to make sure that we were getting all of the information and all the stakeholders' voices as we went through the process. Just like all policies, this one did serve a critical purpose at a specific time and over a particular time period. And we didn't go into it lightly, we didn't have any bias one way or the other, we just wanted to look at it with a clear lens. And we wanted to let the data, qualitative and quantitative, drive our recommendation. So like Jen had mentioned, the nature of youth athletics has changed drastically over the last fifteen years. Modified sports, they used to be an introduction for many of our students to learn the sport and to get an introduction into being on a team. But the students today are coming to middle school already polished in many sports, and they're looking for more than just to participate, they're looking for increased competition. They're prepared for that competitive landscape that we offer in, in high school, but may not necessarily offer in middle school. We used to, utilized a number of different surveys to ensure that all of our decisions were, were supported by that qualitative and quantitative data. Again, we didn't have any feeling one way or the other, we just wanted to really take a look at where we are at this place and time to see if the current policy made sense or if it needed to be changed in any way. It's important to note that the Commissioner's Regulations states specifically that the APP cannot be used in any way to field teams. So that's an important thing to keep in the back of our mind as we, as we went through it, and we wanted to just mention that here, because it is an important aspect to this. Rob?
Chris? Thank you. The current policy states that, that eighth graders and seventh graders in non-contact sports can only play at the varsity level and may not try out for junior varsity or ninth grade teams. The thinking behind the policy at the time was establishing, it was, it allowed for our varsity teams to put the best players on the field of play from within our district. Currently, our eighth graders are not allowed to try out for those teams, because those sports are kept open for the ninth and tenth graders, who will, as Ms. Lamia mentioned, they're still developing athletes.
You're talking about the junior varsity, not the varsity?
Junior varsity, yeah.
Varsity is open to...
Did I, did I...
I think you've got it backwards.
Something wrong there, sorry. The timeline for the process began back in the 2016-17 school year, I came to this, to the board meeting here in June and made recommendations to look into the policy. And at that time, various members of the Athletic Advisory Council had inquired about the current policy and discussed policies from other districts in our conference and other districts throughout Section One Athletics. Currently, our district is the only public school in our conference that does not allow eighth graders to participate on junior varsity teams.
Do we distinguish between contact and non-contact, or any team?
For, for seventh graders, non-contact, for eighth graders, all teams. Forty-four out of forty-seven districts surveyed throughout Section One currently allow eighth graders to participate on the JV level. So our initial impetus for looking into the policy was due to the overwhelming number of districts whose policy different from ours, and that really grabbed our attention. As we looked into this, we want to find out more. And I'd like to, at this time, share with you some of the data that, that we've gathered. And I have a slide, I have a, a, that's my, it might be a little out of order, I'm sorry, There we go. So the slide here on the left, yeah, that's even better, thank you, that's perfect, thank you. So the slide, the pictures, the graphs there on the left, the charts there indicate that, that 100% of the schools in our conference that we compete against allow eighth graders to participate on the JV team. And 93% of seventh graders can participate. And you can see, well, in the center there, the schools that were surveyed responded to the survey. And on the right side, on the green, on the green, on the far right, it's the results from the section-wide survey where 93% of the school districts allow eighth graders to participate on JV. And the bottom respectively for seventh graders at eighty, roughly a little over eighty percent.
When they say eighth graders can play JV, that means, maybe it doesn't, but does it mean that eighth graders can try out for JV? And if an eighth grader is better than a ninth grader or a tenth grader, they would take that ninth or tenth grader's spot in the junior varsity?
Yes. They would take the spot of that, that high school athlete.
And the seventh grader that you're talking about here for JV for other school districts, was that, was that, what story? Is it non-contact or?
Non-contact.
Just non-contact?
The same that we are speaking about here, yes, yes. So this, this, that was the first piece of data that we collected and started looking deeper into that. And then we went on to our, on to our own surveys that we issued here at the school. And we wanted to ask ourselves if we, if it would make a difference if seventh graders in non-contact sports and eighth graders in all sports were allowed to participate on freshmen or JV teams. And we surveyed middle school and high school students. And here are the findings that are driving our recommendation. And in diagram one, which is, that is the one with middle school responses at the top. There it goes, right there, thank you. If we asked the students if they played a sport outside of school and they don't play a sport for the school, what were the main reasons? And one-third of the students responded, said they did so because they wanted to play in a more competitive environment. And that further grabbed our attention here through this process. And if they had an opportunity to play at the junior varsity level, then they might not look outside of our district. And once they go outside to a different organization, sometimes it's hard to get them back to play for our teams. And we took a look at, take a look at diagram two, which is the red, the red bar graph. I think it's maybe down one more, here we go, thank you. At the high school, when surveyed, 60% of the students reported that they have participated in outside organizations. They were asked why they played for an outside organization. And of those, half did so because the outside organization had better competition for them. They felt that the competition level was more what they were looking for. These were, these were high school students that answered this survey.
Okay, so they weren't seventh and eighth graders?
When they played, the reason why, if they did play an outside sport, the reason why was that, that's what we went after, that's what we...
Right, but they're answering it at a stage when they had the option to play varsity.
Yes, yes, but we asked them, the questions were for when they were in middle school. And that's when, that's when we grabbed that answer. It is conceivable that many of those athletes may not have looked outside to play on other teams. And, you know, from this and looking at the data and having our meetings and talking with the coaches and student athletes, we believe it's quite clear that a change in the policy would offer opportunity to develop our programs and our student athletes here in Byram Hills. Coaches and parents are concerned that some of our athletes are not being placed at the level of their ability. And many athletes can play above the modified level, wind up playing elsewhere. And we feel that the current policy could be pushing athletes away, I don't have to be repetitive there. And we think that the coaches and parents' assumptions were confirmed from the data that we gathered. And I have to, I have to say, I'm proud of the process that we, that we used and the time that we took to go through the process and really looking at the data and putting our thoughts on paper and then taking some time away from it and coming back to it. And sharing it with some of our veteran coaches and getting perspectives on it that really helped us look at it without a biased lens.
Could you clarify a little bit, what is the non-contact and what's contact? Which of the sports?
I won't go through the whole list, but for example, basketball's a contact sport.
So that would mean in this scenario that a seventh grader would not be able to, no, right?
Correct, seventh grader. Just tailing off of that, specifically say what the new recommendation is and explain it. Like, I, for, I'm also a little confused by some of the...
So the new recommendation is that seventh graders in non-contact sports and eighth graders in all sports
Eighth graders in all sports, okay.
Will be eligible to try out for junior varsity teams.
For junior varsity. And will eighth graders be able to try out for varsity or that?
They can, they already can.
As long as they, as long as they pass seven, they can too for non-contact.
And with that, I'm sorry, and with that, as Ms. Lamia mentioned earlier, that it is, it is not the intent of this policy to remove ninth or tenth graders trying out for the junior varsity teams as well.
But you're enabling the eighth graders to displace a ninth or tenth grader if they're better?
No, I'll just go back and, because that's a very good concern there, Ira. And I think our recommendation keeps the spirit of what we were trying to do with the first policy with the needs to upgrade it. So wondering about what would happen with current JV players. So the new language would include the philosophy that high school students who are eligible for JV will not be cut by teams to accept strong middle school athletes. So in the case where you had an exceptional eighth grader, let's take our varsity, our basketball, boys' basketball program, for instance. They have cuts at the varsity level, JV level, and even at the freshman level. So in this particular case, a, an eighth grader wishing to try out for JV could try out for JV, but if that meant that eighth grader would displace a current ninth or tenth grader, they would not be accepted onto the team.
So basically what you're saying is that this, the purpose of this change is to prevent a JV team from folding because of lack of participation because eighth graders are not permitted to play JV? Is that what I'm hearing?
But isn't that...
It could help that situation.
What other situation are we trying to address?
Well, it's more, it's more than that.
It is, because if an ath, right presently, if an eighth grade athlete wants to try out for a sport and for the varsity level, and they don't make the varsity level, they can try out for the junior varsity level.
Now?
No.
So soon with this recommendation?
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, the, I was around when we put in the first policy. That was on my watch, along with six other colleagues who were no longer observing. And the theory was that eighth graders will get their time. Their time will come. And that eighth graders should not be displacing ninth to tenth graders from junior varsity teams under any circumstance. Of course, the eighth graders will get to the high school, and they'll get a chance to play junior varsity. And if the eighth grader was truly exceptional, they could play varsity under the circumstances. And I thought that was a reasonable, because varsity theory is, best players play, and if you're an eighth grader, you can play. But now I'm trying to understand what it is we're doing here, what the recommendation is. And if I understand you correctly, Chris, the recommendation is if we have a full team made up of ninth and tenth graders, maybe eleventh in some circumstance, then an eighth grader would not be able to play on this JV contact team because the team is full of high school students. Is that correct?
That's correct, an eighth grader would not knock out a current high schooler, even if they're better.
So I guess just to add...
But they could go and play on varsity.
I guess the other thing that you're addressing though, because there's two situations. One is that there's a JV team that's about to fold because there aren't enough students. And if you have seventh and eighth graders, or if it's contact sport, if you have eighth graders and they can play out, then it solves that problem that we have this. But the second thing that I think it would do, what you're saying, is if you have a middle school student that wants to play more competitively, and the high school JV team is not going to fold, but it's not necessarily full to the ribs either, it gives those students an opportunity. And I think one of the things that probably has evolved since this policy has been put in place is the world of club sports.
That's for sure.
Yeah, and I think that the elegant thing about doing this is that it really gives people more of a choice. Because right now, it's very binary. If you're a middle school student and you want to play competitively, this is not for every single sport. But in most sports, you have to make a very, very deep commitment. That's usually all year round, that could be expensive for, you know, families to pay and precludes you from doing other sports and other activities. And for some students, that might be the right choice, for some students, that might be the wrong choice. Whereas here, you give students that want to play seriously, but maybe not in that amount of depth, the opportunity to play on a competitive team. Where we can at least govern the fact that this is a scholar-athlete situation, not necessarily, you know, violating every, what the pediatric rule of the known mankind.
I understand there was an issue with JV girls' basketball this year, meaning it, I mean, are there issues of other JV teams?
Sure.
Field hockey? And was, were there sufficient eighth graders that could have played field hockey that would have given the JV a team, but they did not play because of the policy?
Well, the important thing to address on that, and it's one of those things that we really, like Scott had mentioned, we're really doing this for the exceptional athlete that can play up and that is looking to be more competitive. One of the, one of the aspects that we need to keep in mind is that the Commissioner's Regulations state that this cannot be a policy that is used to make sure that teams are, don't fold.
But I don't think, I don't hear this is for the exceptional athlete at all. I mean, I just hear, I mean, eighth grade, ninth grade, I mean, I don't, the exceptional athlete, the exceptional athlete exception, I think, is for the eighth grader playing varsity. That I understand.
Ira, if I'm a seventh grade student and there are enough kids to play basketball, but there are more spots left on that high school junior varsity basketball team, and I'm an exceptional seventh grader, I currently cannot try out for that junior varsity.
Nor can you on this either.
Let's say tennis, right?
Tennis, swimming, golf?
They can do that, oh, no.
I'm sorry, I don't know if it's a...
As a mom, I'm concerned, my concern is having a twelve-year-old with a seventeen-year-old socially. I mean, between you and Chris, that's, that's a big difference, especially for a first child. A second or third child might be able to roll with it. But I'm worried about the social aspect on the buses and in the locker rooms. And I'm also concerned about getting our modified teams where we can field the team.
That's a key question.
So two points. We have some students now that are playing, like we have seventh graders who are swimming on the varsity. So it's a similar situation we're talking about. Conversation with parents to make them aware of the different dynamics that their child is experiencing. The bus rides, those students are sitting up in front. The coaches are, there's greater awareness with the coaches in terms of what, that they have some different age students that will be participating. So I think we can address some of that. When we look at the modified program, this isn't going to get it, Chris said it, Rob said it, it's participation. And then you have more, some students who are interested in increased competition. The students right now who are participating on those modified teams are participating, have a good time, they're interested in the sport, they're being given the opportunity. I think this is going to just pull back some students who aren't playing on our modified team because they would like an increase in competition.
To address the students being young, these are our coaches vetted by our district. And that is much different than putting your children into the hands of somebody on an outside athletic team that you don't know if they're trained, if they're fingerprinted, if they've been vetted.
These are also our kids.
And I also have to say that, just to that point, like, I'm to your point, I mean, I understand what you're saying, I get that. But really, that's each parent's decision to make.
Yeah, they're choosing to try out.
So at least, just what my point on that would be that we're currently, like Kim said, allowing seventh graders in non-contact and eighth graders to play up on varsity. The age difference between an eighth grader who's going up to varsity versus an eighth grader going up to JV, it's a lot less. And so that, that would be a less of a concern for me. And just to make sure that everybody's aware, there is a screening that takes place to make sure that people, the athletes are developmentally ready to participate. So it involves a maturation screening, fitness test, an interview with Dr. Casaro, our physician. And this will not change. Students are still going to have to go through this. So that part of the, of the process will not be changed in any way.
What would arguments against this be?
I think the one that students might not be developmentally ready, that it might be used to field teams, to keep teams alive when those kids might not be ready to participate on those teams, that it can be misused to field these JV teams. I think that's what the concern would be.
My concern has always, I'm sorry, Michael, you wanted to say something?
No, I was going to bring up the screening that, that, you know, Chris brought up, so we're fine.
I'm still not clear. And this is an important issue for me anyway on this because this was one of the key issues that prompted the policy during the Nixon administration when we put it in. Is how, what safeguards are in place? I mean, you're going to have, if you have a full team made of ninth and tenth graders and eleventh graders, then the eighth grader just has to wait, right? Or the seventh grader in non-contact sport, but I'm talking about the contact sports. I mean, I'm also concerned about physical harm to students. Things can get pretty rough in a basketball court or a soccer field, or especially a football field. To have an eighth grader play against seniors, kid really better be ready. But, or across another, you can get banged around. So again, it's, I'm just seeing this as a way to keep JV teams from folding. Because if, if there's enough ninth and tenth and eleventh graders on JV, I always thought that's what JV is, you know, and so is that, am I hearing this correctly? Is this really being used? I mean, if we're saying, well, if the eighth grader's really good, well, you're telling me he's not displacing a high school student. So if he's not displacing a high school student, then the only way he gets on the team is if the team can accommodate him. Because instead of having ten play, you know, let's say a soccer team, they're going to carry twenty, and now the JV has sixteen, so maybe four eighth graders on.
So that eighth grader, that, let's just say the eighth grader for basketball, if you can use that example, that, that eighth grade student athlete is able to play at a higher level. Developmentally, that athlete is ready. So when that athlete goes through the process of the fitness test, of the skill evaluation, screening with our school physician, which the process we do feel good about, and there is a space available for that athlete, then they can play at the higher level. So it's not, so it's, we're not looking at this, just to confirm what we're saying and to answer, we're not looking at this to fill rosters. That's, that's not what the policy is for. And that was, what I, what I, what I said before, I, when I mentioned that I feel good about the process that we took. And I feel good with the data that we collected, and it, I believe it supports what we're recommending here.
It sounds like you're also providing those, excuse your example, you have those four kids, an opportunity where now they, those, those children are going to go elsewhere and not come back. Because that's what this data...
Not come back to where, to what?
To our team. They're not going to...
Most kids come back to play varsity.
Look at the, look at the slide, they don't have that. The statistics tell that they don't come back.
Even if they come back, for me, why I think this makes sense is because right now, we are losing them in seventh and eighth grade. And people still should feel free to go to club sports because if you're a really serious athlete, that could be a very legitimate way to develop your skills and there, you know, lots of competition. But there are, I think, a lot of people out there that are not looking for a full year in-depth experience, but want a competitive experience. I think this just gives them another avenue of choice. And we could do a really good job, I think, if it's done correctly, and we safeguard against some of the issues that we talked about because they are real issues. One, the screening, and then two, the... One, the screening, and then two, the mixing of young kids with older kids and all the issues that that brings. So if that's, you know, monitored like it is today with eighth graders going into varsity, because we're doing it anyway, it just seems like we're just giving them more options. And the choice, in an idealistic world, maybe we would say, okay, you know, modify it, and then JV, and then varsity, but it's just not like that, because so many people go outside.
I think, I think we have to.
Sorry, hold on one second, Mike has been trying to talk.
It's okay. I think, I think number one, the most important component for me, and I think the board, I'm speaking for everyone for one moment, is the safety of our kids. I think the process that you've gone through, investigative, the reach, the reaching out to the students, this has been bubbling up to the extent over the last several years because of the changing in athletic programs. So this is not, you know, the pressure on this and the stats were mine, but I, I didn't realize how many other schools, how overwhelmingly it was there. Being supportive, but now, that, that's really kind of tipped the scales for me. But I would mention that, there's one thing that hasn't been discussed, is the continuity of the program. So when you have a JV program where you have then students on the varsity team, I know in field hockey, just as an example, it was big sister to the JV student, and then there weren't enough JV students, anyway, kids to play, but the, the point about it, there was this kind of natural getting to know the players on JV, even if they practiced together. So as that child matured in the program, they then went on to varsity, it was more of a feeder, even having modified as a feeder to JV and varsity. When you have a, not a competitive JV program, that feeder system and the development of those kids working together kind of gets lost. So I think that's a really important program of evolving the policy, understanding that the screening, we've got to monitor this as a district, and then I, I very much appreciate the spirit in which we developed this, because it was done right, it was, it was, a kid will get their shot, and I, I really respect that, and I think that that makes good sense. But if we can monitor this and manage it where an eighth grader is not kicking out a, you know, a sophomore or a junior from, you know, having that high school JV or varsity experience, boy, that, this would be a win-win for both sides.
I'm less, with all due respect to Ms. Lappel, I'm less concerned about the modified program, frankly, because I think the whole premise of the modified program has changed over the last 10, 15 years. It started out before the travel teams and the select teams and all the great teams that parents want to bring, that kids are on. It changed. I mean, when the modified teams came in, it really was for kids who never picked up a stick or touched the ball before, that we're going to teach you basically how to be a little bit of a soccer player, a basketball, a field hockey player. We have to all face the fact, we're not there anymore. The original purpose of the modified team has come and gone. And, and it doesn't mean we should discontinue it, it just means we should face the fact of what it's doing, and, and what the program is supposed to be. I don't think it serves the purpose.
For some, for some.
For some, I was just saying, some people, it's their first entry into a low-risk way to.
Well, for some sports, maybe, I mean, perhaps for field hockey, that's very possible, but even field hockey now, these programs are starting younger and younger, where when these kids get to eighth, ninth grade, they may have been playing field hockey for four or five years, and the modified theory, they may not apply. So, I mean, I think Ms. Lappel is more than capable to handle the modified program and whatever tweaks have to be done to it. But from what I'm hearing from you guys, and I, I agree with Michael, I mean, this does seem to have been carefully considered, and, and so long as the key premise that an eighth grader is not going to displace a freshman, sophomore, or junior, and that an eighth grader is not going to be used simply to fill out a team, then I think it's something that probably is worth trying. I would like to try it personally on a probationary basis.
I would say that like.
I, I would not be in favor of saying blanket, it's in, we're never going to look at it again. I, I'm happy to look at it, see if it works, but I think we should keep a very close eye on it, because sometimes things don't work out the way you think, and sometimes coaches don't get the message. And sometimes, as much as eighth graders can be separated from seniors or juniors, let's say, on a bus, maybe in the locker room, not so much, and teachers can't be everywhere all the time. So I have my concerns, but I think a convincing case has been made to see how this works.
So let me, I'm sorry, you want to do the conversation?
No, I was just going to say, what, what would you think would be a reasonable pilot period?
Two years.
You know what, let me just, just for, you know, procedure, we would have to change the policy vote, and we could always really look at the policy, I mean, that's how we would have to do it. Does anybody have any comments they want to make right now? We can talk again, but I want, I know we have, is that, are you?
That's it.
I know, I believe we have people that would like to speak, is that right? First one, would you, would you stand up, please, and just face the camera, state your name and your address, please?
Dennis Barry, 62 Mill Patton Road.
Okay, if you could just your comments to me.
Uh, thank you, Rob. So you have our letter, my wife and I were pretty clear about how we felt about all this, and it just sounds like it's going to go in a direction that we're, we're hoping for it to go. I would like to, however, sort of expound upon what Michael was talking about. I'm, I'm on the board of both the Armagh baseball, I'm on the board of CYL Bedford basketball, I'm a personal trainer, I've been a certified personal trainer for 30 years, I own gyms, I've trained professional athletes, I'm involved in this stuff. And one of the things that Michael said that I think needs to be thought about a little bit more is, teams come together through trust, and the program that my daughter, I hope, is going to be in next year, which is the varsity JV program, if we have a JV girls' basketball team, is being developed by this great new coach, you folks at Ohio Tower. And she's great, she knows the sport, she knows what she's got to do to get the girls to come together and play as a team. And if we can't get those girls playing together as a team as soon as possible, then we are at a huge disadvantage. And I can give you a perfect example of this. My daughter plays for a team called the New York Extreme, they're based out of Yorktown. We've had her in the program.
What sport?
Basketball, I'm sorry. We've had her in the program now for three years, and she has been developing, she was behind when we first got there. She's been developing and catching up, and she went from playing, I'd say, about a minute each game, to equal playing time with the other big girl, the daughter's very tall. We just, we just did a trial for New York Extreme again, and I was really dismayed to see the other girls who are in all these other districts that you guys say that the eighth graders can play JV, are playing at JV speed. My girl's playing at modified basketball speed, and it's significantly different.
Yeah.
And she's behind again. So we had her caught up, and now we're behind again. And it's because we're not allowing our girls to go and play basketball. And I'm just wondering, if this had happened to JV boys' basketball team, how room would this, how full would this room be?
Resulting, not have been any different.
Yeah, right.
I'm not sure about that.
Well, I, I am.
So I, I'm really hoping that we're able to get this done. I don't completely agree with, I hope we fill rosters, I really do. I would love to see as many girls playing at that level as we can possibly get, and boys too, you know, the whole point is to get them all playing together, so there's a chance to develop, so when they get to the varsity level, they're a better team and we're more competitive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. Did you want to speak as well?
Yes.
Could you just face the camera?
Sure.
Stand near us, please.
Hi, this is Brian Burns of 63 Cox Avenue. Thank you. I just want to thank Dennis for coming here and speaking, Mr. Castagno, Mr. Walsh for the report. You know, I, I hear my wife's comments in there. She's been looking for this for the past couple of years. What Mr. Sanders said earlier before about the continuity, field hockey is, they're, they're not going to have a program by the end of this year. Two years ago, my daughter was in the modified program, they couldn't field a team, they didn't have enough for a modified team, didn't have enough for a JV team, so they moved all the freshmen and sophomores up to the varsity team. They had about eight to 10 girls that were going to try to make it work at the modified level, it didn't work. So I went to the next year, spring sign up for the fall, and I looked at the roster, who was going to sign up, and it was just sophomores and higher. No freshmen, no eighth graders. So when these sophomores and juniors move up next year, that's it.
Right.
That program is done. And Mr. Schulman, there is no field hockey program for, for younger kids, that's it. It's not a very popular sport.
I thought there was.
So there was a modified program offered.
I thought there was a private program offered onto field hockey, that was my recollection.
If, if there was, we would have been on it.
Yeah, okay, fair enough.
So, now, same thing's going to happen for basketball. All those girls who didn't make it this year, I'm sorry, not make it, all the girls who, all the freshman girls who didn't make the varsity team because the JV team got disbanded, I'm not going to see their names on the sign up sheet next fall for, for that program either, and there's a good possibility that program's going to fall.
I, I would, okay, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for your comments.
I would just say to the board that, and I don't, for a moment doubt what you guys are saying, I don't for a minute doubt what you're citing about signups, I'm accepting that all is true. I, I really am. And I know you're concerned, and I, I, believe me, I mean, I'd like to be proven wrong, but I'm a pretty strong supporter of Byron Hills Athletics. I think the record's, I'm pretty rest on my record on that issue. But we're the Board of Education, and we have to look at an athletic program, not on a year-to-year basis, if we look at athletic program in the overall, the overall context of our policies, to make sure what we're doing. There are, there were years that some sports can't field teams, and there were some years, the same sport doesn't do it, all the players that are showing up to practice, things evolve. There were years of field hockey, eight kids showed up, there were years of field hockey, 50 kids showed up. Things tend to go in cycles for any sport, I mean, just look at what happened to Byron Hills baseball, Byron Hills football, one year we couldn't even field the varsity team, a couple of years from now, we almost made it to the playoffs. So there, sports is cyclical, kids are cyclical in their love of any particular sport. My only concern is that we are true to our policies, we're true to concern for the safety of the children, sports, we just can't look at it on a year-to-year basis, we have to look at it globally, we have to look at it in the overall context of what we do to make sure what we're doing is consistent, and I, that's all, you know, and it's not, I don't take away for a minute all the information we've gotten, the letters from the parents, they're all heartfelt, and what parent doesn't want to advocate for their child when it comes to giving them the athletic experience they can? Who doesn't want to do that?
May I, may I ask, just, I'm sorry, may I ask one more question?
Wait. Can I finish?
Yeah, sorry, I thought you were done.
No. Thank you. The policy that we're looking at, FIBO, whatever it is, I, again, I would just ask that if it's going to be amended, which, yeah, I think.
That's the next step.
I think there's a consensus for that, that it be done with a, with a clear probationary period to it, that's all. And I think we should, we have to come back, I'd like to get reports from the athletic director on a seasonal basis as to what's going on, the numbers, how it's being put into place, so we really continue to get a statistical handle on how this is operating and how it's handling the teams, because this falls on us, ultimately, we have to make the decisions, and we should make the right decision.
I guess also, I would like to, I guess, I'm confident that you'll, you know, make sure that the kids are, you know, it's going to be safe for them and all that, but I guess I'd like some reassurance that these kids are not taking spots of high schoolers. I don't know how we get that assurance, I don't know, I mean, I guess it would be through.
We'll word that in the policy.
We'll hear from it on the other side.
We were in the policy.
That's right, exactly right.
That's what I'm saying, but you'll report back to us.
Those words will be in the policy, that, that's our intent, and I'm excited how closely Ms. Lappel, Mr. Walsh, and I are working together on this, and I'm, I'm extremely confident that that, that will be the case.
And I just want to just clarify again, seventh graders will not have the option for JV to try out for contact sport.
That's right. So the exact wording that we would recommend to amend the policy, 5280, would be for exceptional eighth grade athletes in all sports, sports for freshmen, junior varsity and varsity, and for the exceptional seventh grade athlete for freshman, junior varsity and varsity in non-contact sports.
I still don't know why you didn't, exceptional athlete to play JV in eighth grade.
Because we're all exceptional here.
Well, but, no, no, I, I don't take this lightly, this is a policy we're writing, I want to make sure the language is correct. I don't know if I could support that language, although I support the intent, what you want. I think we're making it clear, it's not for the exceptional eighth grade student, it's, it's for the eighth grade student who passes the, the screening we have to do, and if the coach says, okay, there's a spot for you, we'll put you on, don't have to be exceptional about it.
So I think about, you know, Mr. Barry, his point would be a perfect example of an exceptional athlete who's currently not able to play on JV. And the, the reason we use those terms is, those are the terms that we use currently in the policy, for that exceptional athlete to play up to varsity.
It's not just every athlete, it's, it's got to be somebody who, who can, who can make it onto the team.
You have to be exceptional to make it out on a high school level. Yes.
I, I just, I could interject here, the, that language is right from the document that is, is from, down from New York State. So it speaks to the exceptional athlete, and really what they mean by exceptional is above average. So that's why, that's why we have the fitness test. The maturation exam, the screening process, I should say, that is in place, it's for the exceptional athlete or the above-average athlete who can play at a higher level. So that's why the term exceptional athlete.
I think the policy committee will get whatever revision, and then we can go back for a procedural, and I'm not, I'm not trying to steamroll anything.
No, no, I would move to table this then, I'd like to hear back from the policy committee on the language, that's all.
Okay, so let me, let me, let me say this, I think that maybe we should make a move to have the policy committee look at this, because we don't have to accept it, we're going to get a read, we'll see what it is.
No, 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 I agree, I think we should move quickly, I don't think it should languish, but if we're amending a policy, let's get, let's have the language in front of us, look at it, discuss it, and if appropriate, we'll approve it.
Can I have a motion then to?
Refer this to the policy committee?
Yes, for, based on what we talked about, for revision to policy.
I, I will move, I'll make a motion to refer this to the policy committee for prompt action and reporting back to the Board of Education. Would you second that?
Yep.
Great, okay. Okay. Favor? Wow, I have to say, I have to say, I mean, for the time that you were here in June, I mean, thank you for the background and for the way this was presented to us, because obviously, we came a long way from there, from that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Very thoughtful.
Thank you for your thoughtful comments to.
Thank you, guys.
And letters.
Thank you, yeah, it's really helpful to us.
And if I may, if I may respond quickly, because I know it's getting late, to the field hockey concern, we are, we are seconds away, as I stand here, to launching the information about the field hockey clinics that we are putting together for students in grades of five through eight.
Maybe that's where I was hearing, okay.
Yeah, so we, one other, one other piece that I mentioned in June alongside with this was the fact to address the sports that need attention.
Yeah.
And we're doing that through these clinics and intramural programs, so to speak, and we're, we're really, we're inches, we're seconds away from launching that. It's, it'll start in March, we have the first date, we have space, right here in Armagh, they've given us their space, and we have our varsity coach who's going to step in and start working with the girls, and the varsity players are going to start working with the younger athletes in our district, and I'm hoping they sign up, so we're, we're about to promote that from within. Just one sport in particular that I'll speak to now.
Just a real quick question, if the policy committee looks at the board approves, are they, are you trying to implement this for next year, like for that, the current?
Yes.
For the fall? So like, could eighth graders try out for soccer, let's say, this?
Yes.
This summer?
Yes.
Well, soccer starts in the summer, right?
Yes, and I assume that there would be a process that, this would need to go through the policy committee.
Yeah.
And I, with that in mind, yes, that's.
So, and to do that exponentially.
So now, it falls on the board right now, you're out of this for right now, it's on us.
The policy meeting is in January of 2020.
Did you, you had another question, don't mind me, I'm sorry.
Just one point, two points. I grew up in a town called Pleasantville. And I see, you know, my friends who still live there on Facebook, they have a, you know, they're a smaller school. They have a very robust, you know, four through eight field hockey program. I mean, if they're that small, the school, and we can't get, you know, 12 girls, something's, needs to be addressed.
Right, we're a pretty sport-driven town.
We're pretty heavy on sports here. We offer almost every sport, either gymnastics or bowling.
And I'm sorry, my other point was, I'm okay if you want to do this for the spring.
I just don't know if the policy process can meet this spring expectation.
All right, and I just want to say to the public, and this is your point, I think, as I said before, it's on the board now. So leave Rob and Chris, Kim out of it for right now. It's going to be in the board.
In Jan.
In Jan. The board is going to take this and we will, we will carefully, carefully reword it, okay?
Yeah.
And did you have a question?
I do. It's sort of...
Do you have a question also?
Yeah, it's not on the 5280 point. It's just because I'm sitting here listening this and I've never heard this before. When our freshmen start school, their grade point averages begin, correct? Their...
Some of it's in eighth grade.
Ninth and 10th grade, that's when their collective grade point averages to deciding where they slot in.
Some of them eighth grade also.
Okay. Yeah, but, okay, okay, so maybe around eighth grade. So that would say that it's, academics in our, in our district is a meritocracy starting as freshmen. Why is athletics not a meritocracy in our district? Why are we not letting our best athletes play in the best program that they possibly play?
I will tell you that our, the policy that we have, this, this school probably about 17 years ago or so changed its focus to really focus on academics. And one of the reasons that we are a powerhouse academically and one of the best in the country is that focus that we had on making student, student athletes. It was an intentional change in focus. And that's what it was. But what we're talking about here today is saying we could probably do both now.
That's all I wanted to ask.
Also, we also are guided and controlled by regulations issued by New York State, which I think take a fairly dim view of seventh graders competing with high school students under any circumstance. You know, golf, whatever.
Developmentally, I completely agree.
But remember, we're talking about students, we're talking about student athletes. Everybody, we have a number of three, four-year varsity athletes in various sports. There are a lot of factors that go into it. And for the most part, it is not a meritocracy until you get to the varsity program. We made it so the eighth graders can participate in the varsity program if they truly are meritorious, which is the theory of the varsity program, best athletes play. JV is not a meritocracy necessarily.
Well, that's why, that's what I'm asking.
Because that has been the, that has been the policy of not only our junior varsity team, but I think most junior varsity teams in Section 1 do not treat it as a meritocracy because they're still, they're training students to move up to the varsity. And that's how it works. So, and we've been pretty comfortable with that. And I don't sense any great urge in the board to revisit. That's a bigger issue. But the varsity has and always will be a plain meritocracy, best athletes play, period, which I agree with.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you both. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
We should switch, right?
I agree.
No, you're welcome.
No, we shouldn't.
I agree. Obviously, right, thank you.
Good decision.
It's a great decision.
Well, you know, actually, um...
You passing around the pure off?
It's flu season.
Is it, you know?
We have to be careful.
I might just suggest, and I think it's good if everyone is okay, can we switch the agenda around and move site, you okay with this, if we move site basis, task book down and move up discussion, since we're feisty and, we're going to move up item 11.4, discussion of renaming the Byram Hills High School Theater. And this was the area that I mentioned way in the beginning of the meeting, that we were going to get to focus on some of our foundation and some of the, some of the background, the history that's made us where we are today and made us great. And I just want to give a little bit of a background of this agenda item, which is a request that was made to rename the High School Theater. So the background is that the late Gene Bissell was a teacher and a director of our musical productions about 50 years ago, back in the late 60s, early 70s. And this is when Byram Hills was in its infancy. And then in March 2017, his important contributions to our district theaters program and to as many students was recognized as he was the first inductee into, into the new theater honors wall, which is right by our theater right now, our auditorium. And to date, the board, last couple of weeks, has received 38 letters from students, his former students, and we have a few from here today, asking the district for an additional and a very specific honor in his memory. And that was of naming the auditorium after Gene Bissell. And I just want to thank everyone that added their voice and their wonderful memories of Gene Bissell and the many letters that we've received over the last few weeks and this outpouring of admiration for this educator who impacted so many lives is truly inspiring. And it's this kind of pursuit of excellence that has made Byram Hills into the successful public institution it is today. And it's been wonderful getting to know Gene Bissell from the many stories that we've received. And I also want to add that the respectful and organized and, dare I say, persistent approach to ask for this theater naming, it says a lot about our community and the influence that this educator had on this cohort. And every letter, I'm sure you was read and it was appreciated and you really painted a picture and brought to life a man that we didn't have the pleasure of being taught by or the pleasure of knowing. And this educator seemed to have done, he's done more than just, just stay the long haul. He transformed lives and he set a foundation for excellence. So this request for naming was initially reviewed by our board at our last board meeting in January. And at that time, there was a recommendation made that a photo and a bio be added to the wall, right by his, where he was honored, and that Mr. Bissell would again be recognized during the upcoming second induction, which is going to happen in March. And since that time, discussion resulted in an agreement to continue considering the request. And Jen is going to talk a little bit more about Gene Bissell's legacy. And then when Jen is done, I want to just put this conversation in context for us before we begin. Jen?
Okay, great. So at the close of every board meeting, if you've been watching board meetings, I share student and faculty highlights. These moments are really important to me. It's important to celebrate what's happening now, but also I like to stamp the accomplishments of the students in the history of Byram Hills, in their memories, for their family and for our faculty and staff. It really is the highlight of a superintendent's position, to be able to do that each and every time. There are many responsibilities I hold as a superintendent. I don't know if it is my English chairperson background, but I do believe that my near 30-year history in the district makes one of those responsibilities for me to be the narrator of the district's story. Although it is impossible for me to decide on the merit of a man who I'm told is great but have never met, it would be unfair for me to do so. And policy does dictate that board discussions and decisions take place. It's really my pleasure to share some of the many accolades attributed to Gene Bissell by former students. This is a, an educator's dream, to have so many people come forward and to talk about the lasting impact that an educator has had on someone's life. And while I will not say each person's name for, because I didn't have the opportunity to ask their permission, but first, one of the letters that I was looking at, because I read all of these letters, and, you know, my, my heartstrings pull as an educator to think that these adults are still walking around with such a fond memory of their teacher. And the first one is about the community that Gene Bissell developed. And this person said, "Performing in Mr. Bissell's productions was among the most important and affirming events of my youth. For a full-grown adult to say that it's among the most important and affirming events of my youth is outstanding." This person also said that Gene Bissell gave him confidence and a sense of a safe place within a high school society where I could not only fit in, but also where I could be admired and respected." I think just a tribute to the community he developed. Another one that I really loved was the life lessons. Many times, he would quote me a line from Auntie Mame and say, "Remember, life is a banquet and some people are starving, so enjoy it." And as I heard from many people, life lessons, this was one that really rang out for me. This person said that Gene Bissell gave him great confidence. And he said, "Thank you to Mr. Bissell for providing me and so many other students a home to feel safe and accepted in a world where we most often were not." And that speaks to our goal of meeting every child where they are and having them feel a sense of community. "Your dedication to theater arts and education has proven invaluable throughout my life and career. Your advice to us students," and one I remember most specifically, was to remember too, I probably can ask you three, "Always lead with your upstage foot when making your entrance." You set so many students off on the right foot and we are most assuredly still walking on the right path, proud and strong in those steps because of your leadership." And this person hopes that Gene Bissell knows what that meant and can rest comfortably in a job well done. And finally, the last one was, "What did we learn from Gene Bissell?" We learned that, and this is like something for every child today, I could just really post these things up for kids as inspirational messages, but we learned that showing up on time and well-prepared matters when others on the team are counting on you. We learned focus, a difficult task for a 15- to 18-year-old set. We learned about pride in one's work. And we learned about leadership by watching Gene Bissell build, motivate, and direct a team toward a common goal. So I just, I feel that I first hope and trust and probably could imagine that Gene Bissell heard those accolades in his lifetime. Prior to our celebration of him as the first inductee last year and the story of him in the papers, I knew nothing about this man. And I have been in the district for 30 years. Now I know so much about him and the students' lives that he touched. I want to thank the board for the time for me to highlight this. This, the board has to deal with policy and the board has to have policy discussions. And as a narrator and historian for the district, I have to tell the story that is so valuable to a community that we're building here. So I appreciate your time and being able to do so. And now I lead the board to their job.
Thank you. And I know that you're going to want to say something. I, actually, you know what? If the board is okay with this, I think I would like to hear from the public first and then we'll have our discussion. Is that okay?
They can sell patience, I agree.
Okay. Who would like to talk first? If you could stand up and face the camera and state your name.
With your upstage foot.
Upstage foot and an odd number of steps. You always finish on your upstage foot as well. So you're speaking to the audience. My name is Bill Mulvaney. I'm here from Manhattan at 90 Riverside Drive. Grant Storielli and I drove up from the city today to be here and we're very happy to be here. And also we have Richard Deutsch, who is the class of 79. Grant was class of 75. I'm class of 71. We're going to let Richard start it off. Grant will speak. And then I have just a couple of quick points to make at the end.
Thank you.
I'm going to steal this thing. I drove from around the corner. Richard Deutsch, class 79, 10th Avenue Road.
That's your friend.
So a lot of those kids were friends with my kids when they were little and I hadn't seen them in years. So it was kind of a surprise. But I've already submitted one of those letters, which I hope you've taken the time to read. It's, as what I'm about to say is, "Not a repeat of those thoughts or emotions as this pertains to naming the High School Theater after Gene Bissell. We rarely recognize people within their lifetime. We eulogize to great achievement, applause, and acclaim when the deceased are no longer able to hear these kind words. But sometimes those words and gestures, such as naming the Byram Hills High School Theater after Gene, are to inspire others, to set an example, to lead people to greater heights and achievements. Took the Eagles 84 years to climb to a level of excellence in the Super Bowl. Byram Hills High School hit the Super Bowl out of the gate in reputation, national ranking. We were a top 10 school in the 70s. And innovation because of the foundation that teachers like Mr. Bissell established. If Byram Hills started off weak, it would not have attracted the continued outstanding teachers that it has for almost 50 years. If it started out weak, you would not have had its first graduates' achievements in entertainment, business, and teaching, reflecting on the school's reputation so soon in its young tenure. The original Byram Hills High School had additions and wings built on it. You know, I've watched it expand like crazy. But the core still remains. And as from that new section, the new section flows out of the old. So chose the case with the foundation of the original teachers, like Mr. Bissell, who created the footing that the school's future, right up to today, rests upon. He set a bar that each subsequent music and theater teacher had to meet. From the foundation of excellence that he established, teachers built on it, students stood atop it. It should be noted that this effort is not just an acknowledgement because of the so many who have gone on to success on the Broadway stage in film, television, and concert halls. It is an acknowledgement because of those who have achieved success in family, in relationships, in careers, in life. Mr. Bissell taught the importance of hard work, tenacity, and humility, always striving for greatness and never settling for less. He was a man who not only understood what it meant to be a teacher, but what it meant to be a student. Mr. Bissell taught of seeing the world through the eyes of others, of accepting others for their differences before it became politically correct. He brought confidence to so many who lacked it within an environment where being a teenager is never easy. He was fun but demanding, great with advice and allegory, but an even greater listener. He was quick-witted, a brilliant musician, director, and a friend. He was a humble mentor, an exacting taskmaster, an educator who you could always confide in. He was a man who could have taken his skill to the big time, but he realized that the big time is in front of him already. I wish you could have known him. Then I wouldn't have to be here right now. You would have already recognized him in naming the theater after him. But through my words, our words, the letters you received, I want, I hope that you get a glimpse of him. We're asking you to recognize a man you never personally knew, but you know him, maybe not by his name, but by the foundation he laid here. Foundation that this school continues to build upon and whom without, this school would not be the great school that it is. So he was a terrific man and his lessons resonate through my life. My wife and I moved back here. She graduated in 82, also from Byram Hills. We moved back in 91 with the intention of our kids going the distance because we love the school district so much. My children attended through eighth grade and they went to boarding school after that. But we hoped that they would have a flavor of what he brought to us. And they did, from through the people that were here and the teachers that you still have in place. But it was all a foundation. And it was started by a handful of teachers. I know you recognize Mr. Pavlica. There's a whole bunch of other teachers out there. They created this school. And when we were in the top 10, it was about 1977, that was unbelievable. But what you didn't realize then was it was because of those teachers. And they really started it. And that's what Mr. Bissell was. And I can't see this school without him. I can't see this school, the theater, without him being there. He's kind of a bit of a ghost. But I hope you consider it.
Thank you.
You know, he'd be one of...
Who wouldn't want that said about them?
Wow.
You just said.
It was beautiful.
Yeah, no, he was terrific.
Thank you very much.
Hello, Grant Storielli, class of 1975, West Stand Avenue, New York. As I said, my name is Grant Storielli, graduated in 1975, a long time ago. I was 17 when I graduated. I just turned 60. How is this possible? You might ask, why would I drive up from New York City on a Tuesday night, 43 years later, to my old high school to speak to its school board? It is to say this. If you are lucky, you will have one or two teachers in your life whose influence stays with you, whose voice you still hear in the back of your head, whose voice still speaks to you decades later. Gene Bissell had that impact on scores of young people. His name may feel remote to many people here, but he is a distinguished part of Byram Hills history. Gene was a charismatic dynamo, almost a bit intimidating. The force of his personality was huge, as was his dedication to the highest possible standards. The fundamentals of hard work, discipline, and fun stay with all of us who had had the opportunity to know him. And this influence is not abstract. I pursued a life as a composer and conductor in the theater largely because of him. I've been doing it for 40 years now, on Broadway, Red City Music Hall, around the world. And in fact, about a year ago, I had the honor, along with a number of others, of having my name put on the plaque outside the theater.
my name put on the plaque outside the theater as part of its first-year Byram Hills Theater Honors. As I listened to the board and these amazing students you have tonight, I see the great dedication that goes into building the best possible life for the next generation. Gene Bissell did that for us lucky students many years ago. Gene Bissell put the Byram Hills Theater on the map and created a standard of excellence whose effects are still felt today. I can think of no greater tribute to Byram Hills, to its history, to its pursuit of excellence, than to honor one of our own, than to honor the man who gave so much to the school, to the students, and to the community. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thanks, Grant. Hi, my name again is Bill Milvany, class of 1971. I'm not going to talk about how old I am, my age, but I'm also not going to repeat what I said in my letter, the personal anecdotes, all of those things, and after two very eloquent folks spoke before me, just to make a couple of very quick points. And one is, it's true about the history of the school, its beginnings. I did mention in my note about the thrill of seeing the helicopter landing, Governor Rockefeller cutting the ribbon.
That's a great story.
This, the school, you know, it had great beginnings and it did have many, many wonderful teachers and coaches. But even amongst them all, this one man really stood out, I can say from the bottom of my heart. I've seen some of the back-and-forth and there is talk about someone having to be truly exceptional to make this type of honor. Well, if it's not for Gene Bissell, I don't know how you could ever do this for anyone. That's how exceptional he was. He stood out and he was revered by many and loved. One quick point I wanted to make is about when Matthew Gable started this crazy idea. And yes, you've gotten a lot of communications and I hope you weren't too overwhelmed or inundated, but I could tell you something. The way he went about it, we could have gotten a lot more if we really tried. On the back of an envelope, he had a, you know, a list of close to 50 names that he sent out emails. And Matthew being very cautious and considerate, wanted to hear back from these people before he put their names on the emails that he sent with the proposal. And very quickly, he got the enthusiastic support of virtually everyone he sent it to. Two or three didn't respond, two or three who didn't see the email or were too busy to respond, but well over 90% responded and said absolutely they're behind it. And obviously, many have not only then sent their comments to you, a number of others have heard by hearsay about it and added their voices too. So like I say, this is, and this is this many years later, this many people, parents, students, et cetera, who are so enthusiastic about this idea. One last thing I'd like to mention, and I went back and looked a little more carefully at the Policy 7500 of naming facilities, and after carefully reading it and also talking to a few friends who read it the way I did, this idea of most unusual circumstances for doing something like this, the policy actually, and this is just a procedural thing that I'd ask you to consider because the way I'm reading it, it specifically refers to the naming of, quote, "entire buildings and athletic fields." That's very specific and it says entire buildings, not parts of the building or parts thereof. So the idea of the multiple votes and unanimous votes, I might suggest are not perhaps necessary, but rather, at the bottom of the 7500, it talks about, instead of entire buildings, athletic fields, it talks about you can name something for an individual, endowments and scholarships, events, and installations. And I just suggest that, you know, we're not asking you to name it the Gene P. Bissell Byram Hills High School, it's the Gene P. Bissell Theater in his well-deserved memory. Because in installations, it talks about benches, trees, gardens, but these are just examples. I would think the theater might very well fall into that category, so I just wanted to kind of make mention of that. And thank you for all your time and consideration on this.
Thank you for your honesty. Okay, so I'm gonna open it up to the board to speak. I just, you know, we're not here tonight to debate whether or not Gene Bissell is worthy of this permanent honor. That's not our role here tonight. I think what we need to do is the board is step back and we do have policy and as you said, there is, there is a little window there, but it's, I would say, a very high bar. You know, it's not easy to, for us to say, especially not knowing him and we have to get input from community staff, et cetera. But I think that our role really here tonight is to just decide if naming facilities such as an auditorium, gym, whatever, is something that the board feels that we're ready to do. As caretakers of this public institution, I just want us all to be mindful of precedents that we set for future boards, as I would say that the board that set up this policy back in 2005 were mindful of. So with that, I just want to open discussion. I know Scott, you had some words you wanted to say.
Sure. First of all, thank you for coming tonight and thank you for all the letters. And to anybody that's watching, thank you for all the letters because I think it reminds us of the reason that we're in board service for this district. This is a special place and clearly it was built on the foundation of when you guys were here and this exceptional teacher impacting so many lives, not only during the time at which you were in the high school, but for your entire lives. And I think it's an inspiration to us, it's an inspiration to the current faculty, it's an inspiration hopefully to students here as well to know that Gene Bissell had such an impact. That's the first thing. I think in terms of the specific question about facilities, I think it's a serious question that clearly, I guess in 2005, you know, before my time was discussed from a board perspective with our policy. And I know that from time to time, this comes up in various contexts because there are, you know, certain unbelievably exceptional people. And I think the decision that we have to make from a board perspective around the policy is really to take the perspective of looking back many decades, looking at the current point in time, looking at the future decades, and trying to figure out, you know, a way in which can you name facilities? A, do you want to have, when you're walking through a school, facilities named in a public school environment, which is a real question. And then secondly, how do you arbitrate between those exceptional folks from various different points in time and also from different disciplines? You have some administrators that just made unbelievable impacts on the district overall. You have clearly teachers that are making unbelievable impacts on students. You have some faculty members that make impacts through their work with other faculty members on development and teamwork and collaboration. There are a lot of different elements to think through in order to kind of sift through that decision. The other thing that I think we have to consider is, and this is different than many decades ago because it's the sign of the times, for our district and for most districts now to create a new program or a new initiative, for the most part, is very difficult to do on public dollars. So we have a foundation that has stepped in over the last 20 years and over the course of time has become more and more impactful in terms of ultimately, through foundation funds, allowing us to take initiatives to the next level or in some cases even introduce initiatives. I think the most recent example is probably the technology that the district has embarked on over the last three years, really transforming this place in many ways. I am not comparing technology with the impact of a teacher on a student, just to be clear. But I am raising the point that if we go down the road of naming facilities vis-à-vis the policy, certainly it's come up, you know, from the foundation that if somebody's giving substantial donations, there's clear precedent in this country to name buildings after them and name rooms after them. And if you go to most college campuses, that's really the preponderance of the naming these days is, and I think that's something that we've definitely been reluctant to do from a public school perspective. So it's just another thing that would have to go into the mix of thinking through, you know, any adjustments to the policy. So I think, I think that there is no doubt that there's some unbelievably exceptional individuals that touch this district that we all want to find ways to honor, clearly find ways to honor. But I think the, I think the naming of facilities is complicated in the context of just, of time, of just overall time.
I was on the board in 2005, as maybe you gathered from tonight, when that policy was put in place. And it was put in place because there was a belief that naming this building after a living person was perhaps not appropriate. And it led to an overall consideration about naming in general. And I remember the discussion and it had, well, I can't tell you it was as heartfelt as what you three gentlemen presented, which to me was three of the more remarkable statements I've heard in my years from a podium here at the Board of Education. This is a difficult issue and it's difficult because when I went in, when I go into this issue, I accept wholeheartedly your, I might even call your contention, your, I accept wholeheartedly your statements that this was a remarkable man and what he did was remarkable and his relationship with students was remarkable and his productions. Reading the, frankly, reading the North Castle News going back to the 70s, I mean, I remember reading my, I was an editor of my high school newspaper in the late 60s, early 70s, and my goodness, look what they're writing about and reading, forget about the issue, the articles about Mr. Bissell, but just reading the stories about the school board in 1970, '71 was a real eye-opener. I go, boy, they had those issues then too, huh? But this is, it's a serious issue for me because, and when we had this discussion 13 years ago, my position was frankly, the district should not be in the naming business. That was my position 13 years ago. We shouldn't be in the naming business. And I think the point made that, well, you're not talking about naming a building, you're not talking about naming an athletic field, you're talking about a smaller subset of that, I think is a point taken. Clearly, we're not gonna name a high school after him. And, you know, we do have administrators that, and certainly a principal who just retired last year, who's had an incredible impact on Byram Hills. We have teachers who've been here for 40 years and more who've had incredible impact on students and Byram Hills. One could argue that the relationship between a drama teacher and his charges is different than the relationship between a classroom teacher and the student. That the drama teacher has the ability to relate to students in a different way than a classroom teacher can relate to a student. And I say that not to in any way diminish what Mr. Bissell did, to the contrary, what he did with, what he was able to do was remarkable. But that also to me factors into the naming issue. I believe that this man who has been honored in a very significant, appropriate way in Byram Hills, whether or not we can, whether or not there's an additional honor that's warranted, I think is not something that, for me, I can answer today. It's a difficult issue and it's made more difficult by the fact that, I know how badly you three want this to happen, frankly, you know, and not only you three, but the 35 others who wrote such glowing statements about him. But for better or for worse, we are the guardians of the district policies and we have to act consistent with those policies. And frankly, this really is an issue that is so purely within the province of the Board of Education, almost to the exclusion of the administration, that it's, it makes the decision even harder because in so many issues, we go, superintendent, what's your recommendation? We'll hear a recommendation, we'll say, yeah, I mean, you're the superintendent, this is why we hired you, sounds good. But this is different. This issue does not pull on those predicates. And I think that it's self-evident just by the question we're being asked to answer. So I just wanted to lay out what my thinking was on this, that it is a difficult issue, where I was when we adopted the policy. And I think it's, you know, Mr. Bissell taught here for a long time. This issue has just come to us now, so you'll have to forgive the board if maybe we don't have a ready-made answer for you tonight.
Not lucky for you.
But, but please understand that this is going to be seriously considered and the steps that we adopt, whatever we decide to do, will be done seriously, it'll be done with respect to the legacy of Mr. Bissell, consistent with our policy. And that's really what I wanted to say to you guys tonight. Because you're entitled to respect for what you've done, the alumni of Byram Hills are entitled to respect for what you've built because in many respects, we are on your shoulders, we've come after you, who did not attend the Byram Hills schools, we are just the guardians of the legacy, as it were. We want to do the right thing by our district and we will. So that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you.
You know, I just want to make it clear to everybody, three of you included, that we read every one of those emails, that all of us read every one of those emails and they were beautiful. I mean, the stories were just wonderful and it really did help us to feel like we got to know him a little, little bit. You know, unlike most of the other board members, my husband grew up here.
Is your husband Jackie?
No, my husband's cousin is Jackie. My husband grew up here and his two older sisters, they all remembered Mr. Bissell and they were not in the, they were not in the drama program, but they did remember him. And the fact that he had such an impact on you and your lives so many years later that you would, that so many people would take the time out of their day to write these very lengthy emails. I mean, these were not one or two sentences in support of the issue, these were long, detailed stories about their experiences with him and they were very touching. Reminded me of a very close relationship I had with, in my case, it was an administrator who really changed my life and I've never forgotten her. And I was lucky enough to have written to the school, to my elementary school, to find her in time for them to forward the email before she did pass away. So she actually got to see my letter and it made me feel that, you know, sad that Mr. Bissell never got to read all these emails and I hope that in his lifetime, he did know.
He did.
But that I really do hope that, you know, want you to know that we will take this.
Can I just clarify one thing? There's an emphasis on drama. Mr. Bissell was my music teacher and I only really did the senior musical, but he was a music teacher.
Choir teacher.
I took harmony, I took composition, just terrific classes, and that's where my relationship was established with him. He, I mocked the theater program. I was, I ran track, I was more in the athletic world and he talked me into doing the musical and it was probably the best thing that ever happened because it opened my eyes to a whole new world. And, but he was more than drama, he was, you know, music and he was an advisor and...
You should see Lola Branigan performing in the pajama game.
I was little, but...
Quite a legacy this district has had.
All right, I was on stage with her every night.
He was in it.
Maybe that's my comment.
It's just a testament, I mean, all these letters, they were so moving. I loved one, somebody wrote that they were in Pippin, was that one? Yeah, I love that letter. that letter. I love that letter. I loved how you ended it, quoted the song. I, I think it's a testament to all of you and all these students that have written, I mean, the amount of emotion that's gone into this, this, this drive and this, you know, it's not being taken lightly by the board at all, you know, just want to really say that. It's, you know, we're so proud to know that there's a legacy like this, that there's students like this, but, you know.
And we appreciate you just listening to us.
Yeah.
And one other thing to clarify, most of those letters came from people from seventy-one to seventy-five.
Yeah.
I'm the outlier at seventy-nine, my wife was in eighty-two, and he was here until, I think, eighty-seven.
Seven.
All the classes from about seventy-eight on have no idea this is.
When I, when I moved into Byron Hills District, I moved in in the summer of eighty-seven.
Right.
And I remember going to the high school, not because my kids were high school age, far from it, back then, but because there was some event that brought the neighborhood together. And there was, there were signs, basically farewell or some, and I said, you know, this, this must have been some guy, because they were up and down, I mean, this, you don't see this, you know, teachers come, teachers go. But I, it was something that stuck with me. And of course, memories fade, you don't really think about it again. But when this wonderful tidal wave of correspondence came to us, I remarked to, to my wife, saying, you may not remember this, but we went to the high school two months after we moved in. I, I, I remember the name, because it's, you know, smacks of a Yiddish expression, so it kind of stuck, kind of stuck with me. But I, I, enough said, it's.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. You know, as I looked at the policy and, you know, think about, you know, everything that we've, we've heard about Gene Bissell, it seems to me that the policy does make sense in that I feel like sometimes if you put a name on something and the plaque is there, and people don't know who that person was years later, sometimes something more like a scholarship, or something that gets repeated each year with, you know, who that person was and the reason for that, is, to me at least, like a more of a living legacy, that, that students then know, year from year from year, who this person was. So maybe there's something to that.
Just asking you to consider it. I know that it's a huge decision, it's very difficult. The most difficult decisions are the most rewarding at the end of the day. And we understand where you're coming from.
Right. Please understand.
A lot of people don't know the Verrazano Bridge, you know, who that was. A lot of people don't realize LaGuardia was actually a, a guy.
And can I just add, because it, it's also something that I certainly understand and respect, the issues people are having with it to a certain extent. And it's because also partly, you didn't know him really at all. And that's where this outpouring has tried to help. But I can honestly state, this is probably something that just simply should have happened a long time ago. In the late eighties, this should have been done. And I don't know, in a sense even, why somebody didn't think of it, or why somebody didn't do it. Because long before your 2005 policy, long before other issues and concerns about naming things.
Go blame John Gebhardt, I'll call him up in Celebration floor and I'll blame him. But please, again, just to repeat, you have been heard, this will be discussed, it will be seriously considered. And just understand, I hate to use the expression moving parts, but a lot of moving parts are something like this.
Of course.
Great, thank you.
Take a long time, that's, that's quite right. And if you need a greater outpouring, as I said, this was basically.
There's another decade that's untapped.
Basically seventy-one to seventy-five. And I'm seventy-nine, nobody else.
I spoke to students who graduated in seventy-nine, and their recollections are pretty similar to yours.
Robin responded to every single one of those emails.
So unbelievable.
I missed one, came today.
I've never heard a weekend, so I mean, greatly appreciated.
You had good procedures too, because the letters were very well-written.
Also, for all of your outpouring, because we really got to know them. And I did love what Robin just said about a yearly scholarship that would actually tell the people in the community who this man was. Because just putting a name, like you said, the Verrazano, doesn't really mean anything, you drive over it.
Right.
But having somebody talk about, like, you're, you're from the theater department, you're from the choir, and you were our esteemed student, and we're giving you the Gene Bissell Scholarship. And Gene Bissell was all about promoting the well-being of his students, from what you guys are saying, and bringing the community together. And it would be so much more, something like that.
We understand.
Would be more meaningful.
Sure, we do.
Because Pavlo, you had mentioned a science research program, and his name's not a theater, he's talked about every single year. When we go to the academic science research, I learned about him.
You've given us a very, it's an enjoyable problem, because we're talking about a wonderful man figuring out what to do in his legacy. It's not, we don't look upon this as an imposition in the least. It's a wonderful problem you've given us, we should have more of these types of problems.
Let's, let's.
We had other teachers while we were here, so we'll see how this goes.
Thank you all so much for your comments. And just to bring this back to board business. So the options on the table, and I want to see what the consensus is. One, we revisit the policy. Two, we put this on as an old business item, if we want to look and see what we're going to do with this further. Three, we.
I move to table, to, I move to table this discussion pending further investigation of the board, at which point it will be brought back to an active, active business item.
If anybody agrees, is there a second?
Second.
And board vote to table it and bring it to old business?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you so much for making this happen.
Thank you for coming around the corner.
Thank you for your time.
Lovely to meet you all.
Thank you very much.
We are crowds, I couldn't come and introduce. Gentlemen, thank you so much. My son has a wiggly.
Charlie Troy, Charlie Troy. How about the West Side Highway, is the Joltin' Agio Highway, otherwise known as the Joltin' Joe.
Thank you, that was great. Are we not on camera now?
No.
We're not on camera, right? We are still? Okay, we'll be right back. Let's, we're back to item eleven point two, which is a site-based mid-year reports.
Yeah.
We just move to accept these reports, frankly. I move to accept the site-based reports.
Hold on a second, is there anything we want to say though for the public?
I think the site-based team's doing a lot of great work, and I just want to commend the buildings for, for their focus on our site-based goals.
And there's nothing that we got to approve, it was just a report.
Yeah, no, just a report.
Okay, but the textbook, can I have a motion to adopt a textbook ways, from Wayside Publishing? I'm going to butcher this, Entrez Culturas, level one, two, and three, Spanish grades, seven through ten, two thousand sixteen.
I have a quick question.
What second, first motion to approve it?
See.
Second.
Second.
Wait, before I approve it.
Comment, yep, we're not approving the comment.
A quick comment, is this the, the book that the seventh grader's been using with Miss Johns?
Probably yes, I think so, because they've been piling.
Yeah. Okay. Just clarifying, yeah.
Yes.
Good.
Any comments, or what do we need to know?
Yeah, let me just say, we did have a new textbook that Ms. Stahl on a committee approved several years ago. The online platform had changed after the book was adopted, the textbook company sold that and brought in a new one. It wasn't affected. And that was one problem with it, so they weren't using the online component anymore. This book came out recently, has a really robust online platform that will be used, and we have been trying it in different persons. And also is better aligned to the AP standards and to the Foreign Language Association standards. So Ms. Stahl's recommending this new book, which we think is better aligned to our current program.
Is it the same publisher as the one that?
Yeah, it's a different publisher. And I will say, Melissa had fights with the other textbook company for a year, you know, over their change. And then at some point, we realized it's, you know, it's just.
So how do we know how long they'll support the online content?
Yeah, this one I think is, this book is new, and I think it's much better. I think it's integrated with the publisher, as opposed to the other one, which was purchased and outsourced.
I see.
And they ended up selling that.
And Ms. Stahl hardly recommends it?
She does. This one's great.
Okay, good. Any comments? All in favor? Fantastic, thank you for bringing that to us. That brings us to Communications to the Board, and.
Did that one.
I think since our last meeting, I got thirty-eight emails on the theater naming, and I got two on athletic placement. I think that's anybody else, any other?
Could you read them all into the record, please?
Absolutely. Donna, you're going to be here for a long time. Oh, that brings us, nope, nope, reports.
Reports.
Superintendent's report.
Well, the superintendent has a lot to say about Byron Hills faculty and students. Before I get to that, I want to talk a little bit about what the public can be expecting in our March sixth board meeting. We will have the presentation of the administration's proposed two thousand eighteen, nineteen budget. We'll be talking about the budget development process, the eighteen, nineteen budget data, and the next steps regarding our budget hearings. But I just wanted to announce that we're going to be commencing this budget cycle. And the student and staff highlights. I almost feel like you should time me and I should try to speed read these, there are so many. And as I said before, this, being the narrator of the school district, these are the reasons why we're doing what we're doing. We had two faculty highlights that I wanted to note. University of Chicago is celebrating two of our teachers, Joanna Leuck and Michael Young. They've been recognized as outstanding educators based on nominations from first-year students who said these teachers had significant and positive impact on their education. And there's a dinner for them February thirteenth in New York City with the University of Chicago. So congratulations to our two fine educators. Jen Layden, our social studies chairperson, was just awarded the two thousand eighteen New York State Social Studies Supervisory Association's Social Studies Supervisor of the Year, which is absolutely incredible. And she will be honored at a convention in Albany in March. And it's given to someone who demonstrates the highest devotion and commitment to social studies education. And if you know anything about Jen Layden and even Joanna Leuck, it's ironic that they're both being, it's not ironic, but they're both being celebrated. They both have done such a job of working together on collaborating and teaching, and have co-taught classes, and have been very innovative. So it's no surprise for me to see the two of them, both there for social studies, and also Michael Young, very revered teacher. Our student highlights, we are starting in third grade in Suzanne Milano's class. We have Brett Kaplan, who was the January Reader of the Month for the Carol Marsh Mystery Club. This is hugely important. She has over fifty-four hundred fans in her book club. And in the series, he, the series is fictional, but includes facts about different places. And he really, he wrote to her, and he said that the White House Christmas mystery was his favorite, he could relate, because he was at the White House with his grandparents. And we want to thank him for being our January Reader of the Month. I think it's outstanding. And his love for literature speaks for itself. So Brett, we're, congratulations to you. Science research. In our last meeting, I highlighted our five students who were named as scholars in the Regeneron Science Talent Search. County Executive George Latimer recently honored these students and others from Westchester. And Regeneron visited us in the district on January twenty-ninth to present the certificates to our students. We will wait to see if anyone is selected as a finalist, and we'll learn that January twenty-third. What was really lovely for us is Jemmy Chang came back. She works at Regeneron, and she was a student in two thousand four in our science research program. We had her paper, and she came and spoke to the students about the different paths in science that her life has taken, starting with science research. And it was a very powerful teaser.
Sorry, Jen, we'll learn January twenty-third next year.
February twenty-third.
Oh, it's February twenty-third, sorry, February twenty-third, sorry.
It's a long time to wait.
Yes, no. And Alexandra Alex Remnitz, her sister was here tonight discussing Global Scholars with us. She's been named finalist for Neuroscience Research Prize. So she was selected as the top national finalist for the prestigious American Academy of Neurology Neuroscience Research for high school students. This is, they annually award students who have completed extraordinary work in the brain and nervous system through laboratory research. And as a national top finalist, she's been invited to present her project at the seventieth annual meeting of the American Academy of Neurology. She's a kid in LA in April.
Good for her.
She's amazing. The academy is the largest organization of neurologists in the country, and each year they recognize fifteen high school students.
Wow.
Who have created projects that investigate topics in neuroscience at a scholarly level. Four representatives of the fifteen are then asked and selected to present their work at the National Neurology Conference. So congratulations. That is, she, and she worked with marine fish, the sailfin molly. She determined that this hardy species didn't alter their typical behavior due to increasing ocean acidification, unlike most fish. This actually is a novel finding demonstrating how robust this, this species is. So just really outstanding. And when we were there for Regeneron, she came screaming in the room because she had heard the news. And to see all of them gathering around each other with all of their accomplishments at the same time was like, almost more than what you bear, it was great. Our academic challenge team qualified for the National Academic Challenge, this is all, by the way, since last month. They qualified for the National Academic Challenge Championships in Chicago. Fourteen students are eligible to go from June ninth to eleventh. I don't have the names of the students yet, because we're not sure who's going and who isn't. But each team competes in at least six tournament matches, and will hopefully, hopefully advance to the final elimination round. Congratulations to academic.
We've won that in the past, actually.
We have. Congratulations to Brett Stafford, who was recognized as an honorable member of the two thousand eighteen Golden Dozen. This is for football, and it's a player who demonstrates positive sportsmanship, commitment to the classroom, community service, and play at a high level throughout the season. Brett was honored during a ceremony at Westchester Country Club in January. And this is just a tremendous recognition for him. Congratulations, Brett. And Con Edison, Scholastic, we shouldn't be looking at Robin, your son earned the award. But as any parent would like to do, congratulations on all your hard work with the swimming. Con Edison Scholastic Sports Award, congratulations to our very own Brian Glatt. Yeah, we could take a second. Who's mother spent many countless hours with us, and driving him.
And driving.
He won the Con Edison Weekly Award for a student who exhibits scholastic service and athletic accomplishments. And Brian was interviewed Thursday morning by WHUD, and this Sunday, I think, right?
Last Sunday.
Last Sunday. He had his interview, which you could still find online. And the, we just congratulate him for this, that his photo in the Journal News will appear, I think, February fourth, they said. So take a look at the Journal News. Oh, they did it already? They initially said February fourth.
It was on there.
Oh, it asked. I don't know January from February, but I know every accomplishment of our children.
Those who want to know, it's on page D four of the Sunday Journal News.
That's right. And we had exciting news from the Junior Science Humanities, Junior Science and Humanities Symposium. All seventeen of our senior research students who presented their work at this year's Junior Science and Humanities Symposium on Saturday, many received recognition as speakers. We had first place through fifth place for speaker positions. Arjun Goyal, Jonathan Moore, Dylan Mack, Kylie Roslin, Stella Lee, and Joshua, and I, excuse me, Joshua Pisick, I think is your last name?
Pisick.
Pisick. And also, Arjun and Jonathan will present their work as speakers at the state competition in March, along with Dylan and Kylie, who will present their work as posters presenters. And we also had five, one, two, three, four, six poster presenters who received awards. Christina Barris, Julia Zabrowski, Zach Milwitz, Jackson D., I don't know if you can do.
Didos.
Didos, right, thank you, John Duarte, and Rami Berengl. So congratulations to those students. Oh, stop, there's more. Byron Hills Sports Hall of Fame. You know, we hear about the history, people come and they talk to us about the history. And we have tried to really take time to reflect about some contributions of people in this district. And we do have our Byron Hills Sports Hall of Fame that nominates inductees every year. And this year, they have their inductees. Doug Virtue, the class of nineteen seventy-seven for football, basketball, and lacrosse. Ted Virtue, I think they might be related, class of nineteen seventy-eight, football, basketball, and tennis. Marcia Cohen, who was the class of nineteen eighty, track and field, volleyball, and basketball, I mean, three seasoned athletes. Sarah Gutstein Rome, class of eighty-six, lacrosse, tennis, and basketball.
She was an athlete.
Yes. Brian Morris, I don't know her, but I know Brian Morris.
Yeah.
Class of two thousand one, soccer, track and field. I also knew Rob Delasky, class of two thousand two. I also knew Rob Delasky, class of two thousand two, football, track and field.
Yeah.
And, uh, the nineteen eighty-two men's lacrosse team coach, Rich Caputo. So this, um, will take place in the Whipper World Club in Armoc on June first at six P.M. And wait, there's more. There's the Byram Hills Theater Honors, we discussed the honors while tonight, and we do have two thousand eighteen inductees, Laura Branigan, uh, Tom Virtue from the class of nineteen seventy-five, who was here, Jonathan Cerulo, nineteen seventy-eight, Jesse Mayu, who was my student, nineteen ninety-eight, Freya Crasnow, another former student of mine, nineteen ninety-eight, Andrew Eisenhower, I remember all of their little faces, uh, the year two thousand, and Tristan Zimmerman, the year two thousand. So I certainly hope to, that they can all attend, and we will be able to see them at the March tenth unveiling.
Now, that is going to be, um, part of the play, is then, right?
Yes.
Or before, or ever?
It will be before the play.
Oklahoma.
So we had a lot of news in one month.
Very cool.
A great place to learn, work, live, grow.
Wow, thank you for that. Nice celebration. Okay, um, and you're, you recorded, right? Okay, Jim.
Uh, just a few updates for the board, the property tax levy cap, uh, we have received two pieces of information, and I'll go positive, um, both of these are required for the, uh, for us to calculate the cap, we're still waiting for some additional information, we need the pilot information from the towns in order to, uh, complete the calculation, but we did receive the tax base growth factor, which, uh, is a one point zero one zero six, a little bit higher than last year's, which was a one point zero zero seven one, uh, so that increases the amount of levy a little bit. Uh, we also received the allowable tax levy growth factor, and this is where the, the name two percent tax cap came in, it can be up, uh, this, this growth factor can be up as high as two percent, or it's the CPI, whichever's less, and this year it happens to be two percent. Again, it's a positive for us because it will allow, um, a little bit more growth in the, uh, the levy. So both, both positive, and as soon as we get the pilot information, we can do the calculation, we have to submit this by March first. Um, state aid, uh, as you're aware, the governor did propose a budget, we did receive the state aid runs from the state. Uh, projection for Byram Hills is not real positive, it's just a, a small increase of around, uh, maybe seven thousand dollars, uh, and while this slight increase is disappointing, I suppose it could be looked at as a positive because, uh, we do have about a four billion dollar deficit at the state level, and the last time there was a significant deficit at the state level, they implemented something called the gap elimination adjustment.
Uh, we remember that fondly, very fondly, we remember that.
Finally went away, so, um, as long as they don't reduce our state aid, uh-
Those legalized thefts.
Exactly. Um, the governor going forward, though, has proposed a couple of things that the board should keep an eye on, uh, one is, um, he's proposed freezing the, uh, STAR reduction, the tax reduction on STAR, capping it at the two thousand seventeen, eighteen level, that will impact everybody that gets the STAR, uh, reduction. Um, also going forward, uh, to the nineteen twenty, the nine, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, uh, budget, he's proposed capping BOSI's aid, building aid, and transportation aid, the three expense-driven aid. Uh, I would oppose that because the more the district spends, especially in BOSI's with our, um, IPAs for, um, uh, technology, uh, we, we don't want that capped, we, we want to be reimbursed, um, you know, our aid ratio for whatever the expenses we have. Uh, just a, a brief update on the Smart School Bond Act, um, this has been a lengthy process for the district, and, uh, basically all districts, in November two thousand fourteen, New York State voters approved the Smart School Bond Act. Uh, the Byram Hills allocation was three hundred thirty-three thousand dollars, um, there was a plan submitted to the, uh, Lower Hudson Regional Information Center, BOSI's in two thousand fifteen, as required, then September two thousand sixteen, a plan was submitted to the state, took them until July two thousand seventeen to approve the plan, uh, purchase orders went out immediately, and, uh, we are purchasing, uh, perithium, um, activity panels, uh, replacing the smart boards with, uh, perithium boards, um, they have been coming in, and, uh, they have been, uh, being installed, uh, shout out to, uh, Steve Thompson and his crew for doing the installation, shout out to Susan and Andrew for the work and tenacity, uh, going forward and getting this thing approved for us. Uh, we did receive our fiscal stress score this year, it's the fifth year the Controller's Offices provided school districts with fiscal stress, uh, scores. Uh, Byram Hills, again, was a note designation, which is the best classification based on the, um, indicators that this, that the Controller's Office uses to, uh, come up with a designation, year on fund balance, cash position, uh, short-term borrowing, patterns of operating deficits. Uh, the Controller's Office also does an environmental stress, the last two years, um, Byram Hills has, um, had a susceptible designation, and they did change the indicator, and that changed our designation this year to, uh, no designation, which again is the, the highest. Basically, the past years they were using, um, enrollment or the reduction in enrollment is one of the indicators, and because our enrollment has been going down, it has scored enough points to put us in the susceptible category, now that they've changed that to class size, very favorable for us because we have very favorable class sizes, uh, we're no longer susceptible, we're now no designation, which is the, uh, the better classification. Uh, Department of Health inspection, we do have, uh, we requested Department of Health, Westchester County Department of Health come into the cafeterias twice a year to do an inspection, they did show up at Wampus, um, January twenty-third, we have four minor non-critical violations, two of them have already been addressed, two of them are scheduled to be addressed in the next couple of weeks, uh, so really no issues there. Uh, we do have a, an audit coming up that the staff has been working on, um, the end of, uh, April, and we'll report back on that as we get a little bit closer. And just an announcement for the community, uh, April first deadline for non-public transportation, if anybody is, uh, have children placed, um, in non-public schools now, um, you need to request your transportation again by April first, anybody considering going to a non-public school must also, uh, apply by the April first deadline for non-public transportation. If they're even thinking about removing their child or placing a child in a non-public, they should request a transportation. We can, we can always set that up and cancel it if need be, but if we receive these requests after April one, if it's any additional cost to the district, then we have to deny the request, and, and that's very difficult for, for parents when that happens.
It's fifteen miles, is that still the range?
Fifteen miles, yes, yeah.
One five.
Pardon?
One five.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Please, Jim.
Thank you very much. Okay, and that brings us to board reports, does anybody have any committee of board reports?
I'm going to the Education Foundation meeting tomorrow night, and, um, we really need people to buy their gala tickets and get involved because there's some fantastic grants that are going to affect every single school. The indoor playground at Common Hill is one of the grants that's being funded by the gala this year, um, the outdoor play space, I believe, at Wampus-
The outdoor obstacle course.
Is also, the obstacle course, and the high school, um, and the wellness center at HCC, so every single school really needs the support of the community so that those grants can pass.
Just one thing on the Westchester Product School Board Association, there's an event at the end of February, they do it every year, it's open to any board member that wants to attend, and it's to meet the Westchester delegation, all the state senators and assembly members in Westchester will be there, and it's really just a chance to advocate in advance of the budget season.
Will the county executive be there?
Probably not, I don't think so, but I don't know for sure. I'm not sure.
And Thursday night, there's that West Pot dinner that you and I are going to, I don't know.
And I'm going to.
And you're going too, okay, good.
That's right.
Uh, any, any other reports? Okay, any topics for future agendas, request for information during arena? Okay, I already jumped the gun on Communications to the Board, can I have a motion to approve our board minutes, um, from January ninth, two thousand eighteen? Okay, is that, were there any changes or anything?
So it's very small change under, where we talk about the TRS, uh, the teachers, there's just a discounted rate, should be discount rates.
Okay, thank you.
No worries.
I'd like to strike from the minutes the reference I made to my daughter, because if she ever sees them, I'm a big trouble. But I did say it, so you gotta leave it in.
Don't strike all your minutes.
Um, all in favor? Thanks again, Donna. And can I have a motion, go back into executive session?
You want to just-
Regurgibly so much.
Oh, specify the items, please.
Okay, I had specified them earlier, I'll re-specify them, we're, okay, to go into three point five legal matter transportation, three point six legal matter individual employee, three point seven contract matter individual employee, three point eight contract matter